Okay, um, let's see, it's 5:33 and I know we have a lot of public comment tonight. So let's go ahead and get started. So let's start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood is here. Councilmember Pulapati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yeah.
Mayor Terry.
Here. Okay, we'll move on to item 2.0 and I'll ask the city clerk to read the cable television announcement, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, May 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, May 20th at 1:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. So that will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask our city manager to lead us in the pledge, if that's okay Cyrus? Then I'll ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation, which tonight will be given by Michael Dack of the United Church of Christ.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Department for Rich Science. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, Michael. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Michael Dack. I'm the retired pastor in the United Church of Christ. And as I lead, offer prayer tonight, I invite you also to be in prayer or to just listen with an open mind and heart. Tonight I pray with deep anguish for victims of violence around the world, whether they're in your crane, Afghanistan, or many other places where war and oppression destroy innocent life. I pray also for those whose lives were taken or turned upside down in one of the 198 mass shooting events in the United States in 2022 alone. For victims of domestic violence in the... or in violence in homeless encampments in our community, violence in our city streets and in the houses in our neighborhoods. Tonight I also pray with deep gratitude for caring helpers in every place who offer medical, emotional, physical, and financial help to those who have lost so much. And tonight I pray with hope for leaders at every level of society, business, and government who can make a difference, who can lead us away from violence when they have the courage to act. May the leaders and members of our community of Rancho Cordova be blessed with wisdom and compassion and courage. Amen.
Thank you, Michael. Um, moving on to item five, we'll do the swearing in of our planning commissioner, planning commission members. Stacy, are you doing this?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I'll hand it over to you.
So are all seven planning commissioners in the audience? Or do we have some on Zoom? If you could stand and come forward, please.
We have several. Five. Two more.
I don't think I see anybody in Zoom.
Yeah, we're missing Sergio. And Lee.
He's five minutes behind. He's almost here. He's racing, trying not to break any speed laws because he's a lawyer for nonprofits.
Eric, who are you talking about?
Sergio Diaz.
If Lee Frichette is on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand.
I didn't see him when I was looking.
Me either, but he could have called in or be under a different name.
Lee, if you called in to raise your hand, I believe you hit star nine. There's a Leroy in Zoom, or is Leroy there?
That's probably Senior.
All right.
Lee is dealing with a health issue with his mother at the moment, unexpected. He's not able to make it.
Second week of June.
June.
I thought we said second. I thought we said second, fourth Sundays.
Sundays.
Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday. Sunday, that's all, that's all we think. It's a day. It's holiday.
So we are missing Planning Commissioner Lee Frichette, who I believe has... a family emergency. Thank you. So we have six of our planning commissioners up front and we're going to do this at one time. We have two microphones, so if you can sort of share it amongst yourselves so we can all hear you, that would be great. And we will do this together again at one time. So if you will raise your right hand and together, repeat after me. For the Office of Planning Commissioner of the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova, you don't need to repeat that part. I state your name.
I, Cindy Goss.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California...
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Born in domestic...
Born in domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the Constitution...
To the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California...
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Purpose of evasion...
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well...
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon...
The duties upon.
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
What's up, big guy? What's up?
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess to let folks exit and come back. All right, so let's go ahead and call a meeting back to order. Next up will be public comment. So citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of the screen or if you're on an Apple product, it's in the top right. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand now. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comments in the chambers?
Yes. So we'll start with speaker cards that I've received in the council chambers and then I will go to those speakers that are in Zoom with their hands raised and then I have some names that have been submitted via email. First is...
Thank you. Stacy, hang on. If I could ask people in Zoom, please raise your hand now. We'll get to you in a minute, a few minutes, but we'd like to have you just raise your hand now so we can start the process. Go ahead, Stacy.
The first speaker in the room is Troy Fennell. Troy, if you'll come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to speak. There is a timer on the podium. Following Troy will be Pac Carroll. And following Pac will be Ivory Rubin.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. I come to you tonight in opposition of the consideration of plans that are being developed for the warehousing in the Stone Creek area. My wife and three kids and I live there. We've moved in in 2007 specifically for a residential area. Under our original agreement with Elliot, we were under the impression that a new high school, a new middle school, and shopping would be developed in our areas. No mention of warehousing. And when the new warehouse was currently built on Zenfandel and Baroque, there was no notification of the neighborhood at all that you were changing the plans. It's my understanding that the distribution warehouse that is currently there had to have an exceptional process to be allowed to be built. I have one son that's graduating this year at 18. I have two freshmen that will be driving next year. I am gravely concerned about the amount of semi-tractor trailers and the increased amount of traffic that will be flowing down Zenfandel with my young teenage drivers. And I'm deeply concerned with the amount of traffic, the amount of pollution from the diesel, and the amount of noise traffic that will be brought into our residential area. I'm sure all of you have driven down Watt Avenue. Watt Avenue used to be a residential area, but now is a major thoroughfare. And the residents that originally bought on that property are now stuck in a place that is undesirable to live because of the traffic. They can no longer get in and out of their house during peak hours. Already at Zenfandel, we are stuck with traffic in the morning from Anatolia, from Mather, and from other commuting traffic that is bypassing Sunrise because of that traffic congestion and is now impacting our residential areas. By allowing several hundreds, if not thousands, of tractor trailers up and down Zenfandel 24/7, you are negatively impacting our community. Stone Creek Park is an active and thriving recreational center for our community. It houses sporting events, namely soccer. And this traffic's not going to stop on Saturdays or Sundays when kids are playing in the park and cars are coming in and out. Instead, you're just going to create more and more traffic jams. Again, we are opposed to this. We do not appreciate the fact that this stuff is going in without any notice. And yes, I realize technically there's not any residents within 500 feet of that new construction, but that's a pretty bogus excuse not to contact the residents. We have made a significant financial investment in this community by specifically purchasing our home there.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. And I appreciate your time and I hope in the future you will consider denying this. Thank you.
The next speaker is Pac Carroll. Did I say that correctly?
No, but I probably wrote it pretty sloppy.
Okay.
It's actually Paul Carroll.
Okay, thank you. Paul. P-A-U-L. I see. Thank you.
So good evening. My name is Paul Carroll and I also live in Stone Creek. I'm here tonight to emphasize the growing neighborhood opposition to the Stone Creek Industrial Project. One month ago, April 18th, eight of us spoke in person and on Zoom in opposition to this project. We were opposed to its purpose, a distribution warehouse, the scale, four buildings, 48 foot high, 650 foot long, the traffic, the noise, the pollution. And at that time, you, the council, sent the project back to the planning department and the applicant. In the ensuing four weeks, we have worked to inform all the neighbors of Stone Creek, your constituents of this project. Tonight I will provide the court petitions addressed to the client opposing the Stone Creek Industrial Center and signed by 165 of those neighbors. We are still gaining additional signatures and the momentum keeps building on this. Some of those individuals concerned are here tonight. I'd like them to stand to show you the extent of the passion against this project. So I have three asks for the council. First of all, I ask that you listen with an open mind to those of us that are gathered here tonight who will speak in opposition to the project. And please know that these comments represent not just our views, but the concerns of the hundreds of neighbors we have talked to in the last four weeks. I also ask for a community meeting with our elected representatives, the five of you, to discuss the planned and future developments of the Stone Creek area with time in that meeting to answer our questions, listen to our concerns, and gather our ideas for options that would truly enhance our neighborhood. In the future, do us the courtesy, as our elected representatives, of having such a meeting when projects are in the development phase before the plans are a done deal. Here are concerns in person, not through the applicants or city staff. And finally, my third ask is to place a moratorium on distribution warehouses like the Stone Creek Industrial Project and others that are planned for our residential neighborhood. Thank you.
The next...
Actually, hang on, Stacy. Before we have more speakers on this issue, colleagues, I don't know if it would be helpful to have staff weigh in on what we discussed four weeks ago and what actual ability we have or authority we have over the issue that they're talking about? Would that be helpful?
Yes, Mayor. I think that would be really beneficial because there are certain statements that are by the city that are facts. And we've also received multiple emails on not... on the zoning of the property. So if you could lay down the clear facts and then go to the next step, that would be awesome.
Cyrus, I think you said that Micah would be able to at least...
Yes, Mr. Mike. Micah Runner is in the audience and I would ask him to give you a little bit of a background about this project.
I will say this is pretty unorthodox for us to have comment back and forth, but I know a lot of folks have come here tonight to speak about this issue and to just make sure that everyone is understanding of what the question was four weeks ago and what it will continue to be and what kind of leeway and discretion or lack thereof that the council or the city actually has.
And just for purposes of Brown Act clarification, my understanding is essentially staff is briefly responding to questions from the public.
Correct. Thank you.
I would just hope though...
And reiterating that we're still... Reiterating what was last time. Sorry, Linda.
Yeah, one more time.
I would just hope, though, that we are not giving the impression to people that we don't want to hear what they have to say.
No, we absolutely do, but I think it's important. But I think it's important for them to understand that some of the things that are being asked may not be things that are within the power of the city or the council. Go ahead, Micah.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager. I want to appreciate the neighborhoods and the community that's out tonight to talk about this issue. We do really appreciate the feedback. I think one of the things to clarify and just to say upfront, there will be future conversations about this. This will not be the last time. Well, it's not even an item tonight for discussion, but there will be other future public conversations about this. But the item that came before council the other day was two logistics projects that were under design review for two different areas in the Stone Creek neighborhood. Just to clarify, this was designer view. The uses themselves were established with the original zoning on the property. I think that as we move forward, we want to continue to have conversations with the developer and with the community around the design and what kind of design options there are. And I think, as was alluded to, I think previously we will have additional community meetings. In the request to have additional community meetings, we will work on with the applicant for this and some of the other projects that are being considered with Stone Creek. So I think as we move forward, still additional conversation to be had, but there is some current zoning and current legal requirements or legal rights that the property owners have related to what the council is reviewing. And mostly, it's all related to design of the projects and not use. So any other questions or Cyrus, anything to add to that?
Thank you, Micah.
Okay. With that, we'll go back to public comments. Thank you, Micah.
The next speaker is Ivory Rubin. Following Ivory will be James Garcia. Following James will be Greg... Thank you, Mylenberg. And following Greg will be Valerie. Thank you.
Councilmembers, city clerk, and staff. My name is Ivory Rubin. My wife Louise and I have been residents of Stone Creek since 2008. I stand before you tonight to speak on the impact of trucking warehouses in residential neighborhoods. The trucking warehouses are allegedly being promoted by this body as enhancement to the character of our neighborhood, which caused me to reflect on the devastatingly destructive effects that type of enhancement has been on residential neighborhoods across our country, especially those neighborhoods of people of color. Not being able to see the validity of the declaration as it pertains to Stone Creek and nearby neighborhoods, I did some research on the impact of trucking warehousing on residential areas throughout the United States. These developments, that are better known as sprawl within a box, as they proliferate, it is the communities that pay the price. From Mansfield Township, New Jersey, to Fontana, California, the results have been the same and we will be no different. We will have immense increase in truck traffic that chokes our local roads. We will have worsened air quality caused by increase in toxic particulates from truck exhaust. Emissions from diesel trucks will contribute to health problems that include cardiovascular problems, cancer, asthma, decreased lung function and capacity, reproductive health problems, and premature death. Causes of adverse... It will also cause an adverse erosion of the quality of life, a negative transformation of our landscape, of our residential setting. And the noise, the traffic noise alone can have a significant effect on property value. A home located adjacent to a steady stream of noise from passing trucks may sell 8% to 10% less when compared to one located along quiet neighborhood streets. Heavy truck traffic lowers property values at a rate of 150 times greater than that of cars. I have presented the council with backup information from which I'm speaking. The health and safety, the health, safety, and welfare of all of your constituents must be valued above adding tens of thousands of square feet of industrial warehousing and being competitive in the investment market.
Please wrap up your comments.
Yes. That would show empirical evidence of how the character of the community is being enhanced. Thank you.
The next speaker is James Garcia.
I have a little map here with your nice little zoning portal. But members of the city council and staff, my name is James Garcia and I am a resident of Stone Creek. And I'm here again in opposition to the proposed plans to build four large warehouse distribution centers known as the Stone Creek Industrial Center. Until the planning commission has time for further review, please put a moratorium on these projects. My reasoning behind this statement is based off Rancho Cordova zoning portal website. Links on also been submitted to you. After you enter in a project type that is being proposed here, which is wholesaling and distribution, projects types, it will tell you anywhere in the city where you're allowed to build that. At this point in time, at the address there, at 3750 Zenfandel. It is prohibited. As you can see, right here, prohibited. It's your map. This type is gone. Why on earth would this project even come to the city council for approval when it doesn't meet the proper zoning of this type of business? Is it because the location of the Bold Beauty Browns Distribution Center was also in the same prohibited zone? And given special permitting or any other thing that made that project happen? You're now setting precedent for every single project in the area to not follow your own rules. Tilt Up Magazine called it a distribution center, Bold and Beauty. Sacramento Business Journal called it, mentions that it's a wholesaler planning a warehouse. Sacramento Business Journal called it, mentions that it's a wholesaler planning a warehouse. That is a wholesale distribution center, unlike everything else. There's enough of them out there. Stop using previously prohibited built projects to justify building further projects of this magnitude. There's plenty of open space within the city. There's another map that I also provided that has plenty of green spots throughout the city. Build your warehouses out there that are distribution centers, not in the light industrial that this one does zone for, but you need to go ahead and actually build it within the same rules that anybody else that wants to open a business in this city has to follow. They want to build a smoke shop, they can plug it in that zone. They can find where they can build it. You want to have a car dealership, do the same thing. Stop building distribution centers in non-zoned areas. Thank you.
Members of Rancho City Council and staff, I'm Greg Mylenberg, your neighbor and a Stone Creek resident, with a Bachelor of Science in General Engineering, a Master's in Business Administration, Project Management Professional, Contract Representative, and an Army Veteran. My background and training enable me to read and interpret standard construction drawings to include distribution warehouses and public works. Bottom line up front, I asked for a moratorium of proposed additional distribution warehouses, warehouses, storage facilities along and affecting Zinfandel Drive, Baroque Drive, North Mather Boulevard, Bear Hollow Drive, and Spado Drive. Rancho Cordova's own development, the villages of Zinfandel Spa Design Guidelines Exhibit Seven states, and I quote, "Creation of the traditional village's character and ambiance of the Zinfandel Spa." Instead of "As sitting Rancho Cordova City Council, Zinfandel community will become power in road." Disassembled existing and proposed distribution warehouses of 923,000 square feet, according to Rancho Cordova Planning Design Guidelines, will be 553 heavy semi-truck trailer daily trips, an increase of 88% during AM and PM peak hours. If all equal, this would be 24 semi-trucks in a 24-hour period per hour. Zinfandel Road and adjacent collector's streets are at the arterial level or less. So Section Three of Circulation and Access, which is your document, classified level, constructed in accordance with Sacramento County Public Works Standard Drawing H-17, arterial street, which is 84 feet right away, not a major thoroughfare. One highway semi-trailer with a normal capacity load of 80,000 pounds weight is compared to 9,000 cars. Zinfandel and access streets will be destroyed in just one year, according to a Caltrans road construction repairman, resulting in unsafe road grooves, potholes, et cetera. Upgrading Zinfandel Road into an H-18 major thoroughfare, six lane, 108-foot right away, starting at US 50 to Douglas Road, will need to go from four inches to 12, that's triple, base gravel, two inches to six inches of asphalt, again, tripling. Consider the cost per mile. Will the taxes gained from these distribution warehouses pay for this upgrade? Safety. The number of daily heavy semi-trucks will cause a logjam at US 50 and the intersection of Zinfandel, Baroque, North Mather Boulevard. Truckers are paid per trip and will find the fastest route, which means using Baroque, Spado, next to the Stone Creek Park, and Bear Hollow along the Navigator Elementary School.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. For safety purposes, we also have an additional $400 vehicles from the new development. Asked for a moratorium. Thank you.
The next speaker, Valerie Nipschild.
Got it.
And following Valerie will be, I believe it's Sarah Malone. Following Sarah will be Kate Carroll, and following Kate will be... Well, let's just stop there.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Valerie Knipschild. I have lived as a resident in Rancho Cordova for 50 years. I am a current resident of Stone Creek villages of Zinfandel since 2011. My concern is the environmental impact. I would like to briefly speak about the impact development of these proposed distribution warehouses will have on living and possibly endangered species. There are many birds, reptiles, and mammals and other living creatures that call this land their habitat. As a community, it is our responsibility to ensure that all these living creatures are protected as much as possible. I ask for a moratorium on any further development until we can ensure that there are no endangered species that could be harmed by clearing this land for further distribution warehouses. Thank you.
Next speaker, Sarah Malone.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Sarah Malone, and I'm a resident in Stone Creek, and I'm here before you once again to oppose the development of the Stone Creek Industrial Center. When the developer himself stated, "Picture your neighborhood to be like Power In Area," I became very concerned and motivated to make some changes. Personally, we worked hard our whole lives to be able to purchase the home of our dreams in what we thought was a quiet residential community. We were not the original owners of this home, and upon purchase, we did not receive any information regarding projects coming in the pipeline. Distribution warehouses are associated with negative impacts on residents' quality of life. As residents, we feel a sense that we are losing our beautiful community to encroachment by these distribution warehouses, and there is no transparency about what will be stored in these facilities near our homes. These warehouse proposals are being presented individually rather than as a whole, which results in the cumulative impact being minimized. Your constituents live near where these distribution warehouses are being proposed, and just one warehouse brings air and light pollution, noise, shapes traffic patterns, and influences future economic and community development options. Combined, the five proposed warehouses magnify this effect. It's been brought to your attention, this land is not properly zoned for warehouse distribution, and as a community, we are strongly opposed to rezoning or a conditional use permit to provide exemptions for use of this land. I ask decision makers to update land use rules and conditional use permits to ensure that warehouses are better neighbors, and when appropriate, as in this case, block new distribution warehouses in order to eliminate the cumulative impacts that would unfairly burden our community. We kindly ask for the city to implement a 1,500-foot buffer when considering development of any distribution warehouses near residences. In the case of these proposed warehouses, since a buffer was not implemented, we ask for a moratorium. Thank you for your consideration.
Next speaker will be Kate Carroll.
Thank you, members of the council and city staff. I'm Kate Carroll, a resident of Stone Creek since 2006, and I am opposed to the Stone Creek Industrial Project. I'm also here to address the issue of communication about the project and, as well as the impacts it would have upon the community that I live in. Out of 1,600 homes in Stone Creek, I'm very disappointed that only 68 residences were notified by the city about this project, and that's according to the city record of public mailings. Limited communication about development projects breeds suspicion. The Stone Creek Industrial Project is a plan that would have an enormous impact on all of us living in the area, and yet so few families were even notified. Several of us are trying to rectify that by distributing flyers on the project, and when neighbors started learning about it, many had an initial reaction. Why am I just learning about this now? Or why do so few people know? As we talked to Stone Creek neighbors, they also spoke about a variety of impacts that would have on, that this would have on our community. I've provided for public record a list of concerns and issues we heard from neighbors and ask you that you review them. For many people, the added semi-truck traffic was a big issue, as was air pollution and noise pollution and light pollution. In listening to our neighbors, there were a variety of compelling comments. To quote just a few, "This will bring a blight on our neighborhood. How can our kids be ensured a safe path to school or to bike to parks with large semi-trucks to maneuver around? Why would the city want to devalue a lovely neighborhood with well-cared-for homes, larger lots, and turn us into a warehouse district? Forty-feet buildings built to handle semi-trailer trucks are not an enhancement to this area and will not entice people to buy homes near this project." One final quote, which expresses how many of us view this project, and I quote, "This will change Rancho Cordova's image forever, but not for the better." For you as our city council, I ask that we, as members of the Stone Creek community, might work together with you to build a legacy of land use that we can all be proud of instead of one that makes staying in this area difficult for us. And finally, I too ask for a moratorium on this project. Thank you.
The next speaker is Manarak Man. Following... Did I say that correctly?
Correct, yes.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Marilyn Metzger will follow, and following that will be Val. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My apology, I did not prepare. I didn't plan to speak in this evening, but, you know, tonight, I want to speak on behalf of my passion and the community that people talk about, and the previous speaker already addressed the issue. My name is Manarak Man. I've been a civil servant for 25 years. My wife is small business, working six days a week, 12 hours a day. We proudly owned the house in Stone Creek for seven years. My neighbor told me about this. I live across the street of the Baroque and Zinfandels. My disappointment when I was learned about the development at the warehouse, and then, right now, what I learned, that, you know, there's going to be a trucks and a warehouse. This house, we purchased, we thought that this is our last house before we retired, go to retire at this place. I have four children. They all work and go to school, and sooner they're going to have children. And I bought that house so that my grandchildren go to be bike across the street. There's a small park in there. Every morning, I wake up, I look at the beautiful. I do not want to wake up one day, smells the fumes of the trucks and the noise of the trucks, and my grandchildren's going to be in dangerous. I speak passionately to ask you to stop these projects, and I hope that as a community, we all live together to creating the society that we happy to live and live longer. Thank you so much.
You've heard all the generalities. I'm Marilyn Metzger. I moved to Rancho and Stone Creek in 2015. I've been here however many years that is, seven. I'm going to get a little bit more specific and questioning the research, the wisdom of this development firm. The first proposal that you had presented to you showed 1,855 trips on the main entrance on Baroque coming off of Zinfandel, in addition to 200 more in one driveway on Zinfandel and 700 and something on another driveway in Zinfandel. Somehow, the Baroque entrance was eliminated. It's now emergency access only, which is a good move. However, the replacement of that access point is now farther north. It's slightly south of where the bike path is right now that connects the pedestrian crossway of Zinfandel. If you look, I can leave these with you. This is from their report. It is number 801.4. It shows the complexity of this replacement access point. It's left and right turned lanes going in and coming out, and virtually what it eventually does, if you look at the traffic line on this diagram, is all the southbound or the northbound traffic coming from Mather is going to be turned, those trucks are going to be turning right from the center lane of that side of the road because they cannot make a sharp turn. That leaves the other two lanes as thoroughfares going northbound on Zinfandel. You're going to have left-hand turn lane coming southbound from Baroque and North Mather, making left-hand turns. That means those other two thorough, straight-through lanes going northbound are going to be blocked because of the left-hand turn trucks. Then you have the trucks exiting, that is left-hand turn out of that and right-hand turn out of that. Northbound lanes are also going to be blocked. So when there's right-hand turn lanes coming out of that driveway and the one farther down, they're also going to be blocked because those trucks coming out have to go into two lanes, possibly three. And then you have another driveway closer to Baroque that is going to handle vehicle traffic, which may be vans, maybe smaller trucks. All total, and then you add the pedestrian walkway, that means five out of six traffic northbound on Zinfandel is going to be stopped as the other trucks go in and out. Now that is 88%, as one other gentleman mentioned. They say is going to happen at peak hours, whether it's 87% in the morning and 88 at night, it's still 400 truck trips per day, and 70% of all the traffic from that particular distribution center will be using North Zinfandel. That's per their reports.
Please wrap up your comments.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I actually have a question. I have a question for the last speaker. So you were talking about, I'm doing this from memory because I don't have the map in front of me, but the northernmost exit from the parcel onto Zinfandel, trucks exiting from there, turning north, would use up two lanes in that movement, not a single lane? Is that what I heard?
What I'm saying is where the bike trail crossing is right now, it's going to be moved farther north onto the property of the development. It is going to be exit and enter left and right turns at that point. The trucks that are coming from Douglas are going to have to use the left-hand lane, the center lane of northbound, because they can't make sharp turns. They have to make wide turns. So those two lanes here are going to be the only two that are going straight ahead. This is going to be a right-hand turn lane. Now, the other question is, how many trucks can you put in a right-hand turn lane, or better yet, a left-hand turn lane that's going to block North Mather and Baroque? My eyeballs tell me four, maybe, but they have 400 trips, morning and evening, or at least 250, morning and evening. So every time somebody's coming out, northbound is blocked, coming left, northbound is blocked, only coming right out of the driveways because there's two of them then, and they're very close together. I don't know how many right turns you can get with one truck here and one truck not very far down.
Okay, I got it. Thank you very much. Yeah, I look forward to looking at that.
Next speaker, please.
Val.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Val Astle. I was raised here in Rancho Cordova. I've lived here over 60 years. I've seen things come and go, Aerojet, Mather, Army Depot, McClellan, and I've seen the atrocities of what's left behind. This will leave a disaster if somebody decides they don't want to do this anymore or they shut down. Problems that we're already going to have that aren't being addressed, I haven't been talked about, is noise. You bring 600 trucks into an area, they're all going to want to back up, they're going to have their backup alarms on, they're going to be banging the trucks to rack and stack them to move them around, they're going to be pulling out, honking the horns, you're going to be dealing with the crime associated with these individuals that are going to be in the area. be in the area. You're dealing with long-haul truckers bringing materials in, you're dealing with long-haul truckers going out. We have a safety issue, we have a path that is a beautiful parkway that's been provided for us. We will no longer be able to use that path due to the crime that could eventually be brought in. I strongly oppose this. I'm not against business. I have a business in Rancho Cordova, and I had for over 30 years. I want a good business to be in there, a friendly business that brings something to the community, not something that's going to take away and tax our resources. We've already paid enough taxes, and we don't need more to support this kind of an issue. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brenda Guston. Following Brenda will be Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
We have quite an evening tonight, and my topic is slightly different. Although I'm concerned about the efficiency and accuracy that can take place, I'm glad to see that the planning commission has been put back into place because I think that's going to help the council here. However, there are, if I read right, 19 to 20 items, 21 items on the docket for tonight, and I am concerned about how those can be covered and really understood by the public. As an interested citizen, I find it difficult to wait until Friday afternoon to read the city council's agenda and then be properly prepared to address issues like are on the docket tonight, especially some of the ones that are more complicated with attached documentation. And all by Monday night, we're supposed to be ready. So since the council meets biweekly, it would be helpful for the agenda to come out a week before each regularly scheduled meeting to allow opportunity for all parties to review upcoming topics. And it's kind of like we went through the pandemic, and now everybody's been let out, and everyone wants to get their project done. So I understand there's a lot to be accomplished, and yet Rancho Cordova's been doing a great job as it's become a city, and now we're wanting to be more involved. And so how can we do that? How can we work together and really look at the issues and side more with the citizens who are paying the taxes already than the developers who want to come in and make money? Thank you.
I am Helen Wayland-Bashaw. I am not from Stone Creek, but I am going to address the issue. The last meeting, I heard two words being used, light industrial and warehousing. So being inquisitive, I did a little research on it. They're totally different. When you're putting warehousing into an industrial area, an industrial area, light versus heavy. The light one is normally goods that are made that go to the community, direct to it. Heavy is items that are made and then transferred out to commercial people, like, you know, cars and things like that. So when you also talk about warehousing, warehousing is its own little beast. And what a warehouse does is store stuff, doesn't necessarily bring the jobs in that an industrial place would bring in. It brings in bulk goods that get redistributed and balked out. It's totally two different animals. When you talk about light industrial, you're talking about like shoemakers, electronic components, things that go to the consumer. When you're talking about warehousing, you're talking about big trucks, tall buildings, and they're not the same. So Rancho Cordova council, please don't make the mistake we've made with the civic center that's now the, whatever it is this month. You need to use the right terms. And when you use industrial and you use the word light industrial, only allow light industrial into that area. I drove out in that area, and I was impressed with what they have amenities out in that area. You bring in a warehouse, you bring in heavy industrial, you're going to wreck that community. You're going to have safety issues with more vehicle accidents. You could have a child killed because a trucker had inattentive, or the child was a typical child and runs out in the middle of the street. So be smart, let's get rid of this warehousing. I don't know how that big beast was ever built out there, but you need to have what is zoned for, industrial, light industrial, not these big beasts you want to move in. Move them closer to where the airport is. Let UPS and FedEx truck, fly the stuff in and have a tug transfer the containers to the building. That would reduce a lot. But as somebody said, you're going to kill the roads. Heavy diesels kill roads, heavy diesels produce breaking noises, and they're obnoxious. Thank you.
I'm now going to go to Zoom, and I'm going to call on the telephone number, starting with 916-804. I'm unmuting you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
And just to clarify, we have three speakers in Zoom. There's another caller, and then Heather, and that will be our speakers in Zoom.
Hi, everyone, this is Fiza Mughal. I live in Lincoln Village, so I am on the far side of town. But I did want to express my solidarity with the Stone Creek residents tonight. I did receive a communication on Friday, May 13th, from the city, saying the city of Rancho Cordova has been leading the way to foster an innovative economy, and Councilmember David Sanders, who represents the city on the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, was recognized for the city's forward-thinking on multiple fronts. There are three bullet points that follow this. The third bullet point says that the city is working with North Point to bring more than 700,000 square feet of industrial space to the market, helping the region address the need for new space. So we are lauding the accomplishment of industrial development or the industrialization in Rancho Cordova, and I understand it is a hot market. What I don't want to see is this development happening at the expense of our residents and our health and our well-being. Also submitted into the public comments and available on the website, I hope everyone has read this, but Resident Angel Ball has submitted a plea for the city to make available a project planning viewer. And what a common thread that we're hearing when we have undesirable projects in the city from residents, the complaint is that we cannot be informed of projects until they are up for review to council. A project planning viewer will allow residents to view plans before that point so that we can educate ourselves. She is pleading with you to please prioritize this. I would like council tonight to put, please, put this or suggest it be put on a future agenda so that it can come before the public and be discussed appropriately. It should be made a priority. It is a common theme among residents. This has been done, you know, industrial projects in Lincoln Village as well, and there are always concerns about not, it not being transparent and not. So I do believe you should definitely listen to your residents and also prioritize this project planner. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
The next speaker is telephone number 916-770. I have unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Go ahead, caller, you're unmuted. You can speak.
This is Andrew Murphy. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Awesome. I'm going to say that I absolutely support all of my neighbors. I do live in Stone Creek. One of my biggest concerns is regarding safety with children crossing Zinfandel. I have a grandson that I take to navigator school, and I will tell you that I have seen children crossing over Zinfandel many, many times. More than once, I have seen an incident where somebody has not stopped. That is going to probably be more of an issue with the grocery store that is going in on the road that the kids use to cross. And I would like to be able to be ensured that our children are going to be safe, whether they're crossing over on Spoto to the park, or whether they are going to the local elementary school. Thank you.
The next speaker is Heather Marrow. Heather, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you so much. First, thank you for convening and coming together and wanting to lead our city to the best possible city. I know that we have a lot of people that are in need right now, especially of funding for various things and not just to live and survive. I know homelessness is one of our biggest issues, you know, statewide, and as someone who has struggled with homelessness and is also an entrepreneur for disability, I would encourage you to please reconsider the amended application that I submitted for a kit and cut and the domestic.
Well, actually, ma'am.
Heather, you really, yeah.
Stacy, I'll take it. I'll take it. I got it. Thank you. We'll actually ask you to wait for your comment until we get to that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
So your item that you want to speak on will be 12.4 tonight?
My apologies.
Not a problem. Just hang on for us. It's probably going to be a little while before we get there.
No problem. Thank you, Mary.
We're talking about Community Enhancement Fund as our last public item, really, tonight. So hang on for that until we get to 12.4.
Thank you, Mary.
Sure. With that, we do have one other person. I'm just, we'll go ahead, and we can take Robert's comment. I'm going to just remind Robert, when I ask people at the beginning to raise their hand, that's the time to raise your hand so that we can know that you want to speak. But go ahead, you'll have three minutes, Robert.
Yeah, my name is Robert. I'm calling in regards to the flavored tobacco bill going around.
Okay. You're going to want to wait, no, no, hang on. You're going to want to wait until we get to item 12.1, okay?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that.
Hang on. I got those wrong.
All righty.
Nope. Give me a sec. You're going to want to speak. Stacy, can you tell me where am I looking? Oh, 11.1. Thank you. My notes are all out of order. Yeah, Robert, just hang on, and just for Robert, remember, when I ask for people to raise their hands in Zoom, do it at that time so we can get an accurate count of how many commenters we are expecting. With that, Stacy, we'll move back to receive public comment by email?
Yes. The City Clerk's Office received public comments via email. These have been posted on the city's website and made available to the public in the back of the room. They have also been distributed to the city council. If emails came in after 3 o'clock, we will make that part of our agenda packet and make those available as well after the meeting. First public comment received is Crystal Huckleberry, second Darla Hughes, third Scott Alstrom, fourth Hollis Summers Alstrom, fifth Julia Grisinger, sixth Sarah Malone, seven Lynn Kay, eight Marilyn Metzger, nine Richard Martin, 10 Harcomer Nair, 11 Kyle Marks, 12 Jan Rawlings Reposa, 13 Lisa Davis, 14 Timothy Johnson, 15 Vicky Coffey, 16 Wayne Davison, 17 Don Davison, 18 Fiza Mughal, 20 19 Angel Ball, and 20 James Garcia.
And I'll just refer folks back to the fact that this is public comment. These are not, these are for items not on our agenda, so there's not any action that we would be able to take tonight. So that will move on to council reports, and we'll begin with Council for Gatewood.
All right, thank you. So I'll start with first, thank you, everybody that showed up today. Thank you for your words. Thank you for making your voice be heard. Remember what we talked about, that we have reached out to the person that's doing the development to have a community meeting, so be expecting some sort of communication from either them or from myself or someone here that works at the city. So if you send me an email, when I find out about it, I will reply to you. If you don't do that, then expect maybe a letter from the guy that's going to reach out to the community, but that's our next thing that could happen with either in one to two months. Nothing runs fast in government, remember that. It's not going to be the next day, and so just remember that that's what you're supposed to be looking out for next, and I will see you guys at that community meeting. Moving on, so I went to a plethora of stuff because everyone's out and doing things. So I went to the IFest. Thank you for Shelley Blanchard, who had that amazing event. There was a ton of food there. I always go wherever there's lumpia because that's the family recipe. It wasn't as good as mine, but still delicious. And then me and my sons got to release butterflies, which honestly is freaky to have the butterflies in a bunch of boxes, and then all of a sudden, all the community kind of rushed up, rushed up, and then we cut the boxes open and we flew them in the ground, and then you have these, it's cool because they fly off, but the ones that don't sit there and look so sad as they're like flopping on the ground, and then the kids are picking up and kind of peeling the wings off, so. But it was, sorry, it was dark. But it's great seeing how diverse our community truly is. If you guys didn't know this, Rancho Cordova has, speaks over 99 different languages and has over 70 different ethnicities throughout our city, so we are pretty much the most diverse community, I would say, in California, which probably makes it the most diverse city in the United States. But that's what makes Rancho Cordova special, and they all came out, they all showed off. I learned how to use a really cool sword, and I got to release bugs. The next thing is I tried to ride a bike with Cyrus. That was dumb, and my kid was there.
Big mistake.
You know what? Like, just, and the worst part is, is the Gatewood men tend to be extremely competitive, and so my son went with me, and so he wanted to be first, and he's 10. So that means I got to keep up with a 10-year-old that's on a steam streak, and he's flying down, passing the guy that's trying to show the, and we rode all the way around Stone Creek and all that entire area, and we did that wraparound, which is a beautiful bike path, by the way. That's an excellent job you guys have designed it. I didn't have anything to do with it, but I can take credit for it. That back area that has the water, I didn't even know about that. That's beautiful. And so we rode by there, and my kids are like, we're going to come back here and go through that and gather whatever, animals and bugs and stuff that might be necessary. But yeah, that was an amazing, amazing fun event, and the only problem was is that you guys stuck me in a biker's outfit, and for bigger men, it's like putting a sausage in a sausage wrapper, and it's ridiculous, and shame on you for making us wear that. Spandex, you had me in spandex with butt pads. That's just an odd thing for a bigger man. You know, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, I don't have that body type, and I'm trying to, and there's these weird butt pad things, and I'm trying to ride in it, and they're like, let's take pictures. I was like, let's not document this for posterity, because literally my posterity was sitting out over things. Just embarrassing. Then I rode, then I went over to the other event, and thank you, Fiza, for putting that together, which was the Bark Fun Ride. I went over there, my kids were able to stay there, we were able to hang out for about 30 minutes and watch everyone go off, and then I had to run to a baseball game for my little kid, and he did great. Great job, Jacob. The Asian Chamber Night, went downtown to see all the Asian community chamber events. That was awesome. Because we're such a diverse city, a ton of people were there. It's crazy to see people like, who's Amibera, dancing, and so they were all out there on the floor dancing to like Love Shack, which is just crazy to me. Met with Fire Metro, and Linda probably can talk about this because she knows this better, but everyone, the fire season's going to be bad. So this is one of those years that we kind of need to be eyes up and aware of our surroundings at any time because we have a lot of open fields and open grass, and so I'm really concerned about fire in all areas, especially along the American River. So I'm going to count on everyone that lives along that area over by the castes and stuff to really keep their that lives along that area over by the castes and stuff to really keep their eyes on the swivel. Because they're... They were saying that even Sacramento is in danger of having some really bad fires this year because of the lack of rain. Met with the Library Budget Committee. So, if you guys don't know this, I sit on the chair of all the libraries for the region, taking over from Linda because she did it first. And she took it from where it was basically closing down to a strong group. And I'm happy to report that the library is not only under budget, but it's over budget a little bit. And so, they're putting it into savings. And so, they have 20% of savings. Not enough to work on our elevators, but you know, we're working on that. Then, we had the Korean Community Event. The Ambassador, Consulate General came down from Korea and was at Hagan Park, where they were doing a show. And they did a... I don't want to say Kung Fu because that's not the Korean type of martial art, and I can't remember it. But it was awesome. So, thank you to all those events for inviting us for that. And then, of course, I went to the Good Neighbor Event. And that was over... Where was that at, Cyrus?
Sun River.
Sun River. Yeah, I've been everywhere. And so, I went over to behind Sun River, and it was great to hang out with the community. You know, it's the best is that when you guys catch us out there and we're at events, it's a great time for us to come alongside us. And if you have questions or concerns, approach us because that's why we're there. We're there to hear, listen to you. And so, I had some people with some concerns. And then, I was able to put them in touch with the police that actually happened to be there. So, that was amazing. So, it was just a good event. And I literally have had one and a half events every day this week. So, yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Next, we'll move on to Councilmember Poli Patti.
That was awesome, Councilmember Gatewood. I'd like to reiterate...
You're looking much better, by the way.
Thank you. You know, we have the filter effect. That really helps. I can tell you that. I'd like to reiterate your comments, though, Councilmember Gatewood. I appreciate the community coming out there and voicing your opinion and feedback about what's happening in the community and how the city can help with that. That said, I am concerned about that one feedback that we got, that the mailing did not go out to a lot of neighbors. I think the comment was, it just went out to 68 residents. And that is feedback that we will take into account to see if that was the intended area or there was a larger district because this is supposed to be sent to the neighborhood. That said, I'd also like to comment on the feedback about posting the agenda on Thursday. I think we will receive it... As council members, we too receive it late Thursday. And guess where our weekends are spent almost every other weekend, reading up the agenda and reading detailed notes about it. So, we're with you. I understand the concern. And I absolutely share that fact that I wish we could get it earlier. But the city staff works really hard on making these agendas. And they have to work till the last minute to put these together. So, this is a work in progress. This is one thing that myself and I think council members did bring it when we were speaking about it a few, couple weeks earlier, was in terms of how long these agendas are. And if we can kind of have like a time limit for the topics or placeholders so people that are interested in a particular topic can come in at that time versus like, you know, staying up to, we don't know when the 12.1 will come up or 11.1 is going to come up. And we have the residents staying online up till that time. So, that is feedback we will take into concern in the context to see if there's something, anything that we could do to make that better. Believe me, I am all for it. I am not one to sit in council meetings for hours and hours, believe me, especially being sick like this. It really makes a difference. So, that said, in terms of events, I have not been to any events the last two weeks. I think Councilmember Gatewood covered all of it for most of us. I was at Cap to Cap, though, a couple weeks earlier, which was the second... Which was by the SAC Metro Chamber. And I think it was their 50th year doing this, where they take a large delegation from the six counties surrounding the capital region. And we advocate for the major issues that are impacting our city. So, from our council, Vice Mayor Linda Budge, Mayor Garrett... Mayor Donald Terry and myself attended this in Washington, DC. And Garrett... I didn't see Garrett. Mayor Donald was the lead for our Community Resources Chapter, and he did a great job. So, I'll let him go into the details. We met with Congressman Ami Barra and also the Office of Diane Feinstein. And we met with a lot of folks in the Capitol to advocate for our causes. We talked about the homeless. We talked about affordable housing. We talked about broadband and economic development. We also looked at areas to see how we can revitalize our city. So, we looked at how there were areas that were kind of rundown, but they have revitalized. So, we could take some ideas on and use them in our city. So, it was a really, really good trip. I think we did make an impact over there. The end result, though, is coming back. Got COVID, so been out for the last two weeks, still recovering. So, those of you out there, please stay safe. I was masked up almost throughout. So, you know, and I am vaccinated and boosted, and here I am. So, it's out there, folks. Mask up. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Councilmember Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be... Try to be brief, given the number of things we have on the agenda and the state of the clock. I'd like to congratulate the Planning Commission, although I fear after all that public comment, they probably ran for the hills, realizing the difficulty of the decisions that are in front of us at some point. But congratulations to all of them. It's going to be great working with them. Look forward to it. It's been been long overdue. Not to repeat things that Garrett talked about. I think IFest was also outstanding. I've attended a Cal Cities Board Meeting and National League of Cities Board Meeting, had several meetings with the school district on facility-related issues, trying to create more opportunities for our kids. Went to some great theater put on by Rise Up Rancher Cordova Theater Group, which is happening at the MAC in the upstairs room. I think there's one more weekend left in the show. If you haven't seen it yet, I highly encourage it. It's very funny. And you will be amazed what they can do with just a rectangular space upstairs in the MAC. It was really a wonderful experience. Just to give you an idea, you're not even crowded. You're sitting around little tables, and they have food, and you can order dessert and all sorts of things. That's very atypical for what you would expect on a theater sort of on a budget. You would never... You would never realize they could accomplish that much with that little resource. And with that, I think I'm going to pass on to my colleagues. That's my report.
Thanks, David. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yeah, thank you. So, I have been to two meetings. Garrett and I did attend the Metro Fire Two by Two. And they talked again about trying to remodel Station 61, which is the one on Folsom Boulevard, which is really one of the oldest. The legacy of that station is the little building that's got the office in it, which was... Which was probably built in 1920 because the Mills Fire Department is the oldest fire department in the county. So, it's amazing to think that the fire guys themselves actually built and built and built and built until you have what you have today. Their big news was the fact that they are opening the Station 68, which will serve everything south and east of Sunrise and Douglas. Actually, it will serve everything east of Douglas... East of Sunrise, pretty much. And it's opening on May 27 at 10:30 in the morning. And they're going to have a big celebration. And everyone is invited. They handed out a variety of statistics about numbers of calls for service and that kind of thing in Rancher Cordova over the last couple of years. And they talked about what they're going to... The way they're going to try to repeat the program that they did last year, which is... It's actually called a host ordinance, but it's intended to help to limit the spread of illegal fireworks. And then, they have the most useful program. They have a paramedic contact program where people that they serve who are repeat calls for service, they put them on a list, and then they will send paramedics out to try to work with them and identify what their issues are, whether they're healthcare issues or nutritional issues or those kinds of things, and see if they can't head off the problem so that those people don't need to make a visit to the emergency room so that they can get help in their houses as opposed to having to go to an emergency room somewhere. David and I attended the meeting this morning of this transportation corridor group called the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor Joint Powers Authority. And it has to do with Rancher Cordova, the county, the city of Folsom, and Eldorado County. And basically, there is an old rail line that runs... It's actually from where the Sacramento Valley Railroad, which is the legacy of what we have out here on the Boulevard, runs into Folsom and then back out again and into Eldorado County, and actually ultimately goes up to Placerville. And that is intended to be excursion rail. It has dirt paths for hiking, biking, horses. And it has a... They're trying to create also a continuous paved path for hiking and biking so that everyone can use that corridor. And then, finally, I would ask that tonight, we adjourn in the memory of a wonderful gentleman, General Jim Taylor, who actually got his start with the Air Force as a navigator trainee here in Mather. He went on to an illustrious career, both active duty and with the reserves. And then, when he retired and came back to this area, ultimately, he was Chair of the Metro Chamber, as Siri acknowledged the fact that the Metro Chamber has been doing the Cap to Cap Program for 50 years. And he and his wife retired to the woodland area and have been growing grapes and prize stallions out there for all this time. So, we would ask that we adjourn in his memory tonight. That's my...
Did you say the name again? All right, I missed it.
Pardon?
Say the name again.
Yes, General Jim Taylor. He also was a part of a real estate firm called Potter Taylor. His wife was a daughter of the Potter family, old Sacramento family. And so, then his sons went to work with him. And Potter Taylor was a very important name in the... I know there are people here in the room tonight who recognize Potter Taylor and very important real estate firm around here in the 70s, 80s, and 90s.
Thank you.
And Garrett, I forgot to mention in my report, sorry, Mr. Mayor, history repeats itself. So, as you were describing that image of your son like riding away into the distance on the bike, I remembered a PAL run, the original PAL run that happened in Capital Village. And it was, I think, a 5K, couple laps around an area. So, here I am with my son, who was four, five years old at the time, looks up at me and says, Daddy, can I run? He's like, sure, go run. So, he runs. And I'm like, I can't keep up with the kid. He lapsed me in the thing. But I was comfortable because it was a PAL. It's a PAL event. So, the police activities, like there are police officers everywhere. But he took off into a whole lap of that course.
He went down?
It was gone. Yeah, down, down, way to the right.
That's right.
Same, same experience, different mode of transportation. Very good.
I remember last time I was mayor, my first meeting with the mayor event was going and doing that run. But I only did the short one. The 1K instead of the 5K, the 10K. But that was a great event. Well, thank you, colleagues. I also want to thank all of the commenters that came tonight and that have sent us emails. While it's not really possible to reply to that many emails when I'm just one guy, I will say that I do read them. And I know I can see from my colleagues that we all do read them, and we take your comments to heart. And I want to thank staff for at least somewhat framing the conversation because there were a lot of things there that were brought up that may or may not be possible based on the laws that are in front of us. But we are listening, and a lot of us, I think, share the same concerns. Well, I should... I had this calendar for the last two weeks that should have included Bike Week, IFest, the Asian Chamber Event. It should have had, yeah, two different bike events that Garrett went to. But like Sherri mentioned, of the contingent that went to Cap to Cap, a lot of us ended up with COVID when we got back. And in my household, three or four people had it. My youngest got to go to school this whole time, and has tested positive, tested negative every day. But mostly, I've been at home. But I will say that I want to thank not only city staff, but also our DC Lobby Assembly and Company for our Community Resources Team, which, when I took over, was about seven people. Today is about 40 people that choose to be a part of the Homeless Affordable Housing and Housing and Security Committee. And we had a robust time there, even with the protocols and the security issues that are in DC now. It's much harder to take meetings on the Hill. And so, a normal... For a few days, the program is usually 25 to 30 meetings. And we were about 12 this time, which is significantly less, but it just had to do with a lot of the security protocols, not even having to do with COVID, really stemming from January 6. And it is... For those of you who haven't been to DC in a while, visiting the Hill is like visiting the White House. And so, it's much harder and a lot more security and a lot more time. But I want to thank Sherri for joining our team. Sorry that most of our team got COVID. You and me. But again, I do want to thank everybody that put in a lot of hard work leading up to it. I know we started planning certainly after the fall event, which was in October. We were putting together calendars starting in November, I think. So, with that, I did have an SCA meeting. Without doing any kind of electioneering here, I will just point out to all of our voters and my colleagues that there is a ballot initiative on this ballot to reauthorize the $1 and $2 abandoned vehicle and towing fee. This is something that in the past, SCA has been able to approve on its own, on its own body. It's set to expire, I believe, June of this year anyway. So, even if this gets authorized, they won't start collecting it for... Or actually, no, I believe it actually expired at the end of last year. So, we'll go like a nine-month with a lapse. And again, not selling it, but I will say in Rancher Cordova, we are a heavy user of that fee. I believe our... To put in perspective, the highest users are the ones that get denied the most because we submit more than anybody else. So, our denial rate on that is about 70%. And that's because we submit three or four times what like El Grove submits for a reimbursement of an abandoned vehicle within our city. So, it is something that is heavily used by our city. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Cyrus for the signature report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief in the interest of time. Just a couple items. I think all the events have already been mentioned. I just wanted to point out that I had the honor of welcoming close to 150 members of our faith community last Thursday. We had a faith community symposium that was being hosted by our Police Department in partnership with the Sacramento County Sheriffs and also FBI and Central California Intelligence Agency. Well-attended. And they talked and presented on a variety of issues, keeping with the... Having to do with the safety of our churches and houses of worship and making sure that hate crimes or other incidents are identified early on and that can be prevented and keeping our members of our community safe. Also, another quick item I wanted to mention is that we have seen an uptick in number of COVID cases, as Mayor Terry and Councilmember Poli Patti can attest. And I just want to remind our community that we have in a variety of locations within the city limits that we offer vaccination clinics. So, just to give you an example, tomorrow, we have Vaccination Clinic at the United Methodist Church on Zenfellow Drive, another one at Folsom Columa Partnership Building on Columa Road. On Wednesday, we have two locations. On Wednesday, we have two locations with, uh, at Williamson Elementary and also White Rock Elementary School. So, uh, and, and of course, uh, the, on Thursday, and we also have the Capitol Christian Center, which is just outside the city limit. So there are locations available and I encourage, uh, if you know people, uh, know of people that need to get vaccinated, that, uh, please, uh, refer them to any of these locations that are being held throughout the county. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would just reiterate too that, um, for those of you who might have ordered those COVID home tests from the federal government back in like January and they took three weeks to get them, I did that last week and I got them in three days. Um, so if you go to that website, there's a handful of other ones. Um, and I know CBS and Rite Aid and Costco and Safeway all are offering vaccines. Uh, so please take it if it happens already.
Yeah, uh, Kaiser's handing out the kits, uh, the home tests also.
Yep, yep. Um, and there's even on their app, you can order them. I did that too and got them in about two days. Um, so with that, we will move on to the consent calendar item. Consent calendar items, uh, consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a matter, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So let me start by asking, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
The City Clerk's Office has received, uh, a couple of emails for item 9.1.
9.1. Oh, okay, for our minutes. Um, colleagues, anything that needs to be pulled?
Could we look at 9.1 or 9.7? Very simple questions for each one.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the remainder of the, the calendar.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Sander, second by Budge to approve 9.2, 0.3, 0.4, 0.5, 0.6, 0.8, 0.9 and 0.10. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Hi.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, okay, let's go ahead and take them in order, 9.1. David, do you have a comment or question?
Uh, 9.1, these are corrections to older minutes. So I was just wondering, uh, Madam Clerk, if you had any comments about the, the nature of the corrections to those minutes?
Yes. A resident, uh, of Rancho Cordova brought to the City Clerk's Office, um, to our attention a few weeks ago, a couple of corrections that needed to be made to the minutes. And the City Clerk's Office has reviewed, uh, our last few minutes over the last several months and we agreed with her suggestions and corrections. Uh, we are here to bring those items back to you for readoption and I can share with you what those are. Um, the good news is at the end of December, we upgraded our agenda management software, Civic Clerk, which is what you receive your agenda packet in and what the, uh, public uses to access that information online. And we're still learning, uh, the ins and outs of some of those upgrades and learning how to work within that format. Uh, so there were a couple of areas that we missed and we own those corrections, uh, and are here to fix them. So the first, uh, correction was the draft minutes for the January 3rd meeting that were adopted on January 18th. And it did not include an item 9.1 meeting minutes, so it did not include the title. It acknowledged that there was a motion and acknowledged that there was a second, but the actual 9.1 was not in the actual minutes. It showed on the agenda, just not in the minutes. So the title was missing. The draft minutes for February 22nd, 2022, that were adopted by the City Council on March 7th, did not include the motion or the votes for the consent calendar for items 9.1 through 9.6. So it was missed that we did not include the motion and the votes. And then the draft minutes for March 21st that were adopted by the City Council on April 4th, we did not list, uh, a resident who made a comment for 9.14. That was an oversight of the Clerk's Office and we accept that and we are here to make that correction and add her name to the record.
Okay, very good.
Move approval.
Any other questions?
I will move approval of item 9.1.
Second.
I was just curious about the nature of the correction, so thank you for that, Stacy.
You're welcome.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 9.7. Go ahead, David.
9.7 is a list of projects for this fiscal year that would be funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. But as I see it, we have just a single project listed. Uh, Albert is here. Albert, um, strategically, is it, for some reason, we're limiting ourselves to that one neighborhood that we're applying for?
Good evening, Mayor Terry and members of the Council, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department and Councilmember Sander, thank you for the question. Um, this is one neighbor, it's multiple roadways that are, uh, identified for rehabilitation within the countryside neighborhood. And this is based on a citywide survey that was conducted, um, four years ago on a road-by-road basis and we're updating those data this year. Um, but this is based on a citywide survey where we identified that as the next priority for the most efficient expenditure of the funds for road rehabilitation.
Okay, so do we get to name one? Do we get to name several? Was there a reason? I mean, I understand why this one's next in line. Um, is there a reason why we didn't do multiple within this program or can we just pick one?
We could certainly, um, allocate it in different ways in whatever streets.
Oh, this is the programmed allocation and we're saying what project we're going to apply it to.
That's right, we're required to provide.
That was the part I was missing.
Sorry if I wasn't providing that clarification. We're required to provide to the state of California where we'll be allocating these, these dollars for these SB1 dollars and this is what we're identifying to them.
Okay, I took this as an application for grant, was wondering why we're narrowing it to one. In reality, we're getting this money automatically, this is where we're applying it. Okay, I move approval of 9.7.
Second.
I have a motion by Sander, second by Budge. Any, uh, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, motion is agreed to. Uh, okay, we're done with the consent calendar items or move on to consent public hearing items?
Um, Mayor Terry, if I could just go back to acknowledge 9.1, we did receive two emails, um, for item 9.1 and those were from Angel Ball and Brenda Guston. Those were public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't think you read into the records of names. Thank you. Um, okay, moving on to consent public hearing items, consent public hearing items, uh, consist of matters deemed, uh, excuse me, consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Uh, first, do you have any public comments for anything on the consent public hearing?
We have, uh, yes, we have public comment for 10.6.
Okay, um, so let's, we'll, we'll separate out 10.6. Anything else to be pulled, colleagues?
So I will move approval of 10.1 through 10.5.
Second.
Noting that it will be really nice when the design world chooses something besides gray for a building.
Well, there is a sneaky way to get a comment in while I'm still leaving the consent.
We have gray houses, we have gray buildings.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve all items except 10.6. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
No one likes gray, yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
I like gray, just not everywhere.
Yes. Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Budge, you know, all our cubicles are gray, so every time we had to go into the office, it was like, you know, a sea of gray and it was really depressing.
I think you need purple balloons or something.
While I enjoy the color conversation, let's get back to work. All right, 10.6, uh, we'll go ahead and take a public comment.
So, uh, first public comment in the council chambers is Mitch Schwent, Schwink? Mitch, are you here? I don't see Mitch.
I submitted for the public comment item and thinking this might have been that. Who knows?
We've had a lot of comment about this, about this item already in, in general public comment.
Something, well, it, this sounds like the same thing, I don't believe it's the same thing that we're talking about.
Next, we have Mary Miller. Is Mary Miller in the room? I do not see Mary Miller. We have Paul Carroll.
He spoke, spoke earlier.
He's here. Following Paul, if you're in the room, is Catherine Whitcomb and, uh, James Garcia.
So Paul, before you speak, I, I, I just want to clarify, this is not the project in Stone Creek.
Absolutely. This is the project on, on Bear Hollow and North Mather. It also is a 40-foot warehouse that's 620 feet long. And if you think about, sort of, we have, you've already approved and it's been built, the beauty brand warehouse on Zinfandel. This would anchor the other end along Bear Hollow of a warehouse, a large high cube warehouse, 40 feet tall, and the Stone Creek project would be four of these warehouses on the other end is Zinfandel. So if these, if the logistics center is built, we've essentially established a neighborhood of warehouses. And every project that comes in after that for this space, we're going to say, there's a precedent for it. This is a warehouse neighborhood, we can continue to build them. So I, I actually support the resolution that defers it to a future date in time, but I remain opposed to the project because I think it, it establishes the nature of that neighborhood and this is a forever decision. This decision will shape what that whole part of Stone Creek is going to look like for many, many years, whether they're full or empty. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would clarify, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it wasn't in Stone Creek, I just meant it wasn't the ones that pop in Zinfandel or the ones that were in discussion on the south end of Zinfandel. Um, do we have additional public comment?
Yes, the next speaker is Catherine.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, um, thank you. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova recently. Uh, I reside on Spado Drive at 3644. My home faces the Stone Creek Park and I'm very close to North Mather. Um, and so this project, I'm here to express my opposition to the project, um, of the warehouse, uh, for reasons that were articulated by others regarding the other end of this kind of design, uh, regarding air pollution, um, also noise pollution for those of us who are in proximity to these proposed warehouses. But I'd particularly like to say that I'm concerned about the quality of life, sort of the public good, for instance, in having this kind of facility in the intermediate space or maybe the intimate space between what is the, uh, school and our park, the populace, the children who frequent both of those locations, um, and sort of the activity of people coming and going. On Spado Drive, um, whether the trucks in this proposed warehouse would be allowed or not allowed to use our street, um, whether they intend to or errantly drive on Spado Drive, it's a very narrow street with a couple of pedestrian crossings, which at present are not particularly safe because of visibility for traffic and I'm someone who drives on it, always coming, going from my home, that the visibility is very poor and people tend to drive too quickly anyway. So large vehicles would be an additional hazard to the safety of children, families that cross the road with their strollers. Some of our residents are also older and their mobility is not as, you know, spry. Um, and then in particular, I'd like to say that our community has a gem in the Bear Hollow Stormwater Basin, the drainage of storm water. When I moved to this neighborhood, I thought it was an eyesore because of the, uh, sort of fencing around it, but I have soon come to learn that it's an absolute gem of an environment that supports lots of wildlife, waterfowl, beavers.
Cyrus, tell her about the fencing you're putting around it.
Yes, exactly. And if you are a sporadic episodic visitor to this location, you probably can't appreciate really how rich the ecological environment is and how meaningful it is to us as residents. I run on the path, which the city apparently created with landscape, um, almost every day. My partner, who also lives in my residence, walks it every day and I recognize many of my neighbors who are daily travelers on these pathways around the Stormwater Basin, also on North Mather, right? There are bicyclists, there are elderly people, couples out walking in the morning and evening. So any sort of major traffic that would be a consequence of this, um, warehouse would be potentially hazardous to all of us and sort of change the quality of life. And that Stormwater Basin may be, um, I don't know, kind of a coming and going environment based on the season, um, but the animals there seem well-adapted to whatever environmental changes come seasonally. And it's just really an absolute gem and I hope more people in our community come out and enjoy it and that we can preserve it for what it is and really celebrate it and keep it as something special that's not encroached by hazards that might come. So thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you.
James Garcia.
Hello, once again, I'm James Garcia. I live in the Stone Creek neighborhood and like Paul had mentioned, I support the resolution to, um, postpone the logistics center project. However, I oppose the actual project itself. The logistics center of Rancho Cordova project is once again a distribution center project that has 32 truck bays in the building. Once again, this is a prohibited project per the city zoning portal website. This is zoned for business professional by the county assessor. You use it as a office mixed-use zone, which then in turn you break down into an office business professional and an office industrial mixed-use. So when you do that, you're trying to slip in another industrial project. It's not industrial and business professional zoning. So not only are you proposing it, you're considering, you're not considering the ramifications of the semi-trucks that utilize a narrow two-lane road, which is North Mather at the top. You are proposing a driveway on North Mather for this project. It is a downhill slope with a sharp turn that stops at a light. How in the world is a truck going to get in there? That is ridiculous. On top of that, you have the school down the way. You are destroying this whole area with slipping in distribution centers in improper fashion. If you want to quote, "Light industrial means buildings not more than one story in height and not exceeding 10,000 square feet in gross floor area." If it's two stories, then it's considered 6,000 square feet of floor space. How in the world is 150,000 in the wrong zone to boot? So you mentioned that you want our input. Our input is stop the madness, give us a project viewer so we can actually, are well-informed way before you as a council about these projects. Get the agenda to us sooner so we can actually research and have proper comment on issues like this. Thank you.
Mayor Terry, that's all the speaker cards I have for this item. Uh, we have not received any emails for this item and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Cyrus, you wanted to make a comment?
Uh, yes, Ma- Mayor, just a couple of comments. I just wanted to, um, the previous, prior commentary mentioned about the basin. Uh, just wanted to let everybody know that we are in, our Public Works Department is in the process of replacing the chain link fence with a more attractive cable and, uh, post fencing around the basin. We also plan on installing some informational signs, uh, that will be educational about the type of habitat we have in the basin. It is truly a gem and, and also it's noteworthy that hundreds of trees have been planted along or inside that basin the last few years. So, so more to come and, and hopefully this will be a far more attractive place. The other comment I wanted to make is about the, uh, reference that one of our speakers have made, has made to the zoning app, uh, app or zoning, uh, on our website. This, the program is called Open Counter, is intended to be a very broad general informational a very broad, general informational for site selectors. We have site selectors from New York City, from, from other states that look at our properties and, and look at allowable uses. And, uh, specific uses have to be referred, uh, to in our, on our specific plans. So Stone Creek does have a specific plan that was approved by this county of Sacramento before the city incorporated in two thousand and two. The zoning has been identified, has been clearly identified on the, on the zone. And unfortunately, the, the locations in question tonight are under the flight path of Mather, and those, the uses for that, those sites are very limited as to what they can be and what kind of, uh, facilities or uses we can put in there. So more to come on that. We will have more discussions with the community, but I just wanted to know that some reference has been made to this portal or to this website. That is a very broad, general website. It's not to be used for zoning applications or for zoning uses. This is, uh, the, we, there is a specific plan, and that's where the zoning is identified. And that document was approved over a decade ago, or two decades ago.
Quick question, um, Cyrus, so are you, are you saying that Portal is, uh, giving inaccurate data?
Uh, I think, you know, it's, it's not, I'm, uh, I'm, I have to ask the planning staff. I think it's meant to be a very general and, and more, most of the time it tries to be very conservative. So if a site selector is looking at a site from Texas or from New York, they can actually pick up the phone and call staff. But it's not intended or meant to be used by, uh, by planners or by, uh, designers for, for doing the zoning on the city.
Well, the odd thing about that particular, um, screenshot, uh, that's been presented is that they show, um, they show areas that are prohibited, that are, uh, permitted, as actually being in the middle of, um, Cat Village. Uh, both the commercial and the residential part of Cat Village, which of course has never been accurate.
Right. And Darcy.
Does not show the zoning for Stone Creek.
Um, is there, is there a website that we could recommend?
Darcy's here, and she can address that question.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Darcy Galar with the planning department. Yes, Open Counter isn't meant to be our zoning portal. We actually do have a zoning map that we would refer people to. Um, that's the best place to go to look at zoning. Additionally, calling the planning department, um, that is your other best alternative for determining if uses are permitted or not.
And, uh, well, I'll ask the question because it's, Darcy, don't go away. These, this has been referred to as light industrial zoning, and that, that meets a certain definition and some other things. Since this project, since this, I mean, we're going to continue this and have further conversations, but in staff's opinion, does it meet the current zoning? And I know Mike had used a word called by right that I'm not sure everybody in the audience may have understood. Could you expand a little bit more on?
Sure, so, yes. Both properties are located in the villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area. And those zones default to the county code that was in place at the time. So the Stone Creek project has a light industrial zone. The uses that you would look at for permitted or conditionally permitted, meaning needing a conditional use permit, would be under the MP and M1 zones. For the logistics center site, that site is zoned BP. The uses that are allowed in that are under the BP and the MP zone. So we have to look at the county zoning code. That was in the place at the time that that plan was adopted when we incorporated into the city, and that's where we look at the uses. So warehousing uses listed in those zones are permitted by right, which means they are allowed. We have discretion over the design.
Thank you, Darcy. I appreciate that. So I will move that we continue item ten point six to a date uncertain.
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati. Go call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Hi. Motion is agreed to. Uh, okay, we're moving on to public hearing items. Our first public hearing item will be eleven point one, flavored tobacco ordinance first reading. And I'm kicking this over to Arlene. Am I pronouncing that, or is it Arwin? Arlene, right?
I'm here.
Okay.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and city council members. I'm here tonight to present the first reading of the flavored tobacco ordinance. As you may recall, on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, city staff presented proposed amendments to the municipal code to implement a prohibition on the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city. As a result of extensive feedback and recommendations from various community groups at the April eighteenth meeting, city council voted to continue the first reading of the proposed ordinance. To implement the ban on the sale of flavored tobacco, city staff proposes amendments to the following sections of the municipal code. Chapter four point oh seven, changes to definitions and regulations and requirements for tobacco retailer license holders and applicants. The repeal of chapter six point eight six, since these provisions are already addressed in chapter four point oh seven. Chapter six point eight four, zero two zero, changes to definitions in order to be consistent with other sections of the municipal code. And chapter twenty-three point nine one nine point one hundred. This changes the minimum age for entry into smokers' lounges, hookah bars, and other similar businesses. To address specific recommendations and comments from community organizations, city staff proposes the following additional changes to the previously mentioned sections of the municipal code. The ordinance provides an exemption to the ban of flavored tobacco for existing hookah lounges. These businesses would only be allowed to sell flavored shisha tobacco for onsite consumption. We've also updated the definitions for tobacco product, e-cigarette, electronic cigarette, or electronic smoking device, and smoking to reflect the recent best practices and address newer types of tobacco products. And lastly, the amendment clarify that the one thousand dollar fine per violation would be charged to the tobacco retailer or licensee, not just any person. So city staff recommends waiving the first reading and introducing the ordinance with the proposed amendments. If approved, the second reading of the ordinance will be held at the next regular meeting of the city council. Then the ordinance would go into effect thirty days after adoption. An enforcement of the ordinance would occur ninety days after the effective date. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, we will open the public hearing. And, uh, let's take public comment. Stacy?
The first public comment, uh, will take in the council chambers. Kim Ard. Uh, yeah, thank you. If you'll come forward. And, uh, next, we will have Bishop Mario Gaines. Following Bishop Mario Gaines, we'll have Charles Taylor, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Good evening, um, mayor and the city council members. My name is Kim Ard Lutolo, and I'm a concerned African American representing our community, not only here, but locally throughout the whole Bay Area. My spirit keeps alerting me to say to you all that the danger that's lurking in your city on your watch. Please pay close attention to what I have to say in regards to the unintended consequences that no doubt will occur in Rancho Cordova, as they have already occurred in some surrounding cities. Focus your attention on the fact of the underground black market that sells cigarettes, not only to adults, but also making it easier for children to have access. They don't care who they sell it to. And your crime rate has been down over sixty-one percent, so I've been reading. And here we go here, it's gonna increase your crime. It has been happening all across these other little cities that surround your city. So the consequences are also with the loss of revenue. There are federal laws in place that prevent children from purchasing cigarettes. And smoking is no way good for your health, but it is an adult freedom of choice. Okay, the ban is going on the California ballot in November. You have over seven thousand black Americans in your city and over fifteen thousand Hispanic citizens in their beautiful city that do not need to have more police contact because they are smoking a cigarette or vaping or anything to do with the tobacco flavors. No, they cannot be arrested for it. However, we have witnessed within the last few years of many police choking, shootings, and beatings of African-American men that have resulted either in death or serious injuries from incidences that have escalated from maybe a mirrors, traffic stop, or sales of loose cigarettes, such as in the Eric Garner case. Let us not forget the recent chasing and beating of the fourteen-year-old Elijah Tufanal by your officer Brian Fowle for having flavored tobacco cigarette. You need to look a lot deeper into this, re, you know, research statistics um, and the data of the city surrounding Rancho Cordova, and leave the ban to the California voters to decide.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next.
Hey, good, good evening, uh, city council, uh, to the mayor and to all you great, amen, people of God. I want to first of all commend you, because this is the first time I've come into a city council meeting where you've done the pleasurable lesions and then also opened up with prayer. So I commend you, amen, that God is in this place. And as a member of the faith-based community, I thank Michael, uh, Doc, amen, for opening up in that prayer. Uh, as Kim has explained, I tell you, if we don't be careful, we can lose ourselves in language and get lost. Here we have the ban itself, and the language of the ban is talking about what's palatable. The meth, amen, or the menthol, amen. But what it misses is the fact that that's not the addictive factor. The nicotine is. And then you're shifting the blame or shifting this product to another place, which is more acceptable. And I don't know if you passed it here yet, which is the marijuana, the legalization of it. Where it is, it takes away the flavors from the menthol and shifts it right on over to the marijuana, so it's yet still open. Then, uh, you know, it's a removal of economics for our citizens who have came into a free state to be able to enterprise and to be able to work and, and basically provide a product that is public choice. And now here we being taken away the public choice to be able to implement a ban. And now I say, if you ban it, won't you ban all of it? And just that it's just one part of it. Uh, and so the unintended consequences in which Kim said is inevitable. Uh, I deal with the African-American community. I deal with the life. I deal with the re-entry. I deal with the mental health. I deal with the homeless population. I deal with the crisis intervention for the police officers uh, that does anti-stigma when it comes to dealing with mental health and the rest surrounding that. So the police contact is very much there and is present, so I don't need to continue to, uh, ad lib that. So then it goes on to, like we said, the unintended contact consequences. Can you imagine here, uh, when the federal regulations have been raised from eighteen to twenty-one? So the prohibitions, nature is there for those who are trying to smoke in order to get a tobacco. You know, you have to come up to that age group. So anybody that causes themselves to sell and violate that, they should be funded. I mean, she'll be, uh, you know, charged for that. And so with this, the unintended consequences of what it does for us as a community, uh, if you can look at the African-American community, what you have is crack on the first floor, you have pills on the second floor, you have marijuana, you have methamphetamine, and now you adding cigarettes because that's gonna become a product that is gonna be lucrative in that African-American community. And who's gonna sell it? Those who are on the lower standards of the economy. And so unfortunately, it's gonna happen, and it's already happening. So you have an opportunity to go ahead and rethink it. Really put some thought in it as our civic leaders to be able to address the issue. No, there's no, uh, issue of rehabilitation in, in this message. Uh, you know, the, those who have, have to come off of those. Then you're talking about, uh, de-genderification for this product moving from one place to another.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. Every time you ban it, it's gonna have to be shipped somewhere. And so people will be coming in, transit in to pick it up at whatever place. So God bless you, and we hope that you would take this in consideration and make the right choice. Thank you.
Next speaker is Charles Taylor. Following Charles will be Allegra Taylor. Following Allegra will be Henry Ortiz.
Good afternoon. I'm Charles Taylor, Village Advocate. Uh, I'm here to speak on this, uh, ban of the menthol cigarettes in, in general. Oh, I don't smoke myself, but I have a lot of friends that do smoke, and unfortunately, menthol is their favorite choice. By banning menthol cigarettes in your city, it's not gonna stop them from smoking. It's not gonna stop anyone from smoking. Smoking is bad in itself, so just banning the menthol part of, of the, that industry is not gonna help it. They're gonna go to wherever it's not banned, and like I said, we transport it back in here, and then, uh, to get it, they're gonna have to go through, uh, changes. So if you're gonna ban cigarettes, ban, like I said, ban them all. It's, uh, where does it stop? Uh, you know, menthol happens to be the flavor of most African-Americans. They prefer the menthol to the standard, uh, type of smoking. And so to me, it seems that the, there's a hidden agenda on the, on the cusp of, of the ban, whether it's to put more stress on the African-American community or to just, uh, another way to incriminize them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Allegra Taylor?
Allegra Taylor, co-founder of the Village Advocates, and I am also the chief advocate for our organization. And I'm a smoker. So, he doesn't smoke, but I do. I think that the infringement upon civil liberties of a personal choice is bad. So I used to be a menthol smoker. Had I, I made my own choice to choose to smoke non-menthols. You all are gonna be making the choice for others to smoke whatever they can find. So when you take away the rights of the people, what you do is you also expose those, expose them to undue unnecessary trauma, unnecessary stress, undue stress. We also serve the homeless community. We've been working with the homeless family that actually just recently got a job here in your city about thirty days ago after a sponsorship for employment. She's a smoker. She smokes non-menthols. She has a lot of stress. Juggling homelessness with kids, keeping them in school, cars breaking down, trying to figure out where to sleep from weight to the, one day to the next. Her outlet is her menthol cigarettes. I often wonder what is gonna happen when she can't find a menthol cigarette. I've often seen her drive all over in Sacramento to find a menthol cigarette. So it's a choice, and you all shouldn't be taking away the choice of the people, and you surely shouldn't be using the guise of youth or buying it, because I'm sixty years old, and every time I go to the store to buy a cigarette, they wanna see my ID. I could have all my grace showing, and they wanna see my ID. So that's bogus. And the other thing I'm saying is, I'm gonna say it just like my husband said. The African-American community, Latino community, majority smoke menthol cigarettes. So it does appear as though there is a bias here. So if you're really concerned about the health and welfare of the people, and you're gonna ban cigarettes, and you're gonna, you're gonna do that thing, you're just gonna take your, take authority, abuse your authority by taking people's personal rights, then ban all the cigarettes. Don't just ban the menthol cigarettes. If you're coming for them, come for all of us. Then let's see what happens with that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Henry.
Good evening. I come to speak about, about this topic because it, it's really, if you're gonna ban something, you're gonna ban it all across the board. You're not just gonna affect one side of the business market. And then, and, and that, especially those that, those of us of color that shop in that industry, where now that's gonna go underground, because the people are gonna produce the product, whether we like it or not. That's just the nature of the underground world, right? And, and, and so now what's happening is people that use, you know, this flavored tobacco to deal with the daily stresses of life, the insanity that we're forced to live because of systemic racism every day. And unless you were a person of color, unless you were a person growing up in communities like South SAC or Del Paso Heights, where, where, where there's outrageous murders and violence and abuse and stress and multi-generational historical trauma, you know, cigarette is the only outlet, you know, as much as it may be addictive, but it's the only legalized outlet that people have to. that people have to deal with this stress, you know? The fact that they legalize marijuana has chilled out a lot of people, has been able to reduce a lot of addictions in people and that can now just smoke marijuana to calm the PTSD, the anxiety, bipolar personality disorders that people suffer. There's so many undiagnosed mental health issues that our people face every day. And the majority that don't have healthy outlets unfortunately end abusing, you know, substances that hurt them, right? Substances that are toxic or whatnot, right? But so is the food that we're eating. If you want to regulate something, regulate the food that's killing us. You know what I'm saying? And so, you know, what we're saying is, you know, be equal in how you're going to run, you know, if you're going to change one thing over here, you got to change it over here too. You know what I'm saying? And really, I don't think this is a solution, as Ms. Taylor mentioned. You have to get an ID to buy the product. And we're all grown folks, and we all have stressors. And who are we, if we're not providing effective, healthy, quality mental health services to our people outside of incarceration and these concentration camps that are not working, that never were meant to work, then don't try to take the little remnants they got to try to get some kind of sanity due to the extreme stresses that we go through through to trauma. And so, and as I said, we hope that you look favorable on our request as these are the requests of the community that we represent. I'm an organizer and I work with a lot of people of color, those impacted by incarceration, the CPS system, deportation, and drug addictions at times, you know? And we treat all people equally and fairly because they're all human beings who once upon a time were somebody's children, right? That weren't cared for, that weren't nurtured, that sometimes, you know, hurt people and end up hurting people. And these substances are the only things that keep some of these people sane. So we got to really think about diagnosing the core issues instead of attacking ourselves over these, you know, other factors that are really not going to make any kind of dent in the problem. The problem is systemic. That's where we need to start addressing the issues. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christina Robinson.
Hello. I don't really want to repeat everything that everyone has said because I can pretty much say the same thing, except that I know that the tobacco, the flavored tobacco, these vape pens a lot of times are used to, you know, get people off of who wants to quit smoking. And I think that it's a positive thing rather than a negative thing. Unfortunately, a lot of our children has picked up some of the habits. But if you look at it, they follow all of us adults. And no matter what we do, whether it's drinking alcohol, smoking weed, cigarettes, whether we're working hard or we're not hardly working or, you know, whatever, they pick up our own habits. So it's us as parents that have to do more and to keep our children in check. As it was said, it should go on the ballot, let the people vote for that. I don't think that it definitely will cause a problem if it's banned. I take in something that you guys are already put out there and people are utilizing it. They're using a lot of the, you know, the vape pens, like I said, just to get off of smoking cigarettes. You know, you talk to someone like my mother, she'll tell you, "I'm not going to quit smoking, nobody's going to stop me smoking until I die." You know, death is going to pretty much end it. And I understand that. She wants to live her life, she wants to be happy, that makes her calm. You know, hey, who am I to say, you know, anything to her? Yes, I'm worried about her health, but that's her, still her decision, not my decision to make for her. And so I just ask that you guys do not put a ban on this. Really take consideration of what community is coming to you about, consider that. And I'm coming out asking that same question, same concern. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to folks in Zoom. I'll ask you all, raise your hand now. We're going to take stock of who has their hand raised in the next like five seconds. And we'll read out those names, and then that will be the order in which we will take these. So if you want to make a comment and you're on Zoom or by phone, please raise your hand now. Okay, so I'm going to read the order here. We have Thomas Lawton, Tim Gibbs, Kimberly Bankston Lee, Marissa Greenban, Jim Knox, Rachel Koenig, Alex Winston, Ryan McClinton, Heather Morrow, Phil Gardenier, Robert B., Lori Comstock, and our final, okay, we'll give one more here, Fiani Johnson. And our final speaker will be TW. That will be all of the public commenters tonight from Zoom. So we'll go ahead and take our first commenter, which will be Thomas Lawton.
Thomas, I'm unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Thomas Lawton. I'm the Government Affairs Representative for Fumari, a premium hookah manufacturer and a member of the National Hookah Community Association. I'm speaking on behalf of the minority communities throughout Rancho Cordova that practice the centuries-old tradition of hookah and are proud members of the NHCA. We express our gratitude and show our support for taking action against the youth nicotine addiction epidemic. We applaud the council for achieving regulatory goals while balancing the interests of minority communities that practice the centuries-old tradition of hookah. Hookah tobacco has been mixed with molasses or honey since its inception over 500 years ago, meaning it is always inherently flavored, and it is not a product of big tobacco's recent use of flavored vapes to entice our youth. It is clear that hookah is not contributing to the youth nicotine epidemic. Statistics released in the most recent National Youth Tobacco Use Survey conducted by the FDA in 2021 shows teen use of hookah is less than 1% nationally and dropping. Therefore, a ban on hookah would be unnecessary and discriminatory towards the tradition practiced by many minority communities ranging from Armenians, Persians, Middle Easterners, Turks, North Africans, and Indians. Please protect these immigrant communities and the traditions brought with them to Rancho Cordova and protect this cultural hookah exemption. Hookah has been a fixture of social activity since its first appearance in India in the 16th century. It then evolved from 17th century Persia to 18th century Turkey to 19th century Egypt, Israel, Armenia, and Pakistan, where it eventually reached the United States in the late 1800s. Hookah is a symbol of respect, hospitality, and social engagement in many of these communities. It's an integral part of social life, just as other communities' social norms might include drinking coffee in a cafe or beer at a barbecue. A 2018 FDA study showed almost 90% of Americans who use hookah do so no more than once per month. By comparison, the average American cigarette smoker smokes 14 cigarettes per day and vapors can vape compulsively around the clock. For many communities, hookah is a non-intoxicating fixture of social interaction, including in some circumstances where social norms do not include drinking alcohol or using other substances. Hookah water pipes create aerosol that is 60% water and heat sisha at a temperature that is four times lower than a burning cigarette. By contrast, cigarette smoke is 75% tar, carbon monoxide, and nicotine. Please keep in mind this rich tradition does not merely include smoking hookah tobacco, but is centered around respect, hospitality, social engagement, and enjoyed with other aspects of culture such as art and music. Criminalizing live music and dancing from being enjoyed at hookah lounges will have a discriminatory effect on these businesses and will slowly prevent these businesses from being able to afford to keep their doors open. To prevent discriminatory business practices, we ask that council considers updating the hookah exemption to mirror the regulatory requirements for other social establishments in Rancho Cordova.
Please wrap up your comments.
... closer requirement that is applied to bars and restaurants in permitting live music or entertainers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I just want to remind speakers that when we say wrap up your comment, that doesn't mean finish your statement. That means finish whatever comment you're on. Thank you. Let's move on to the next speaker, which will be, excuse me. Sorry.
Tim Gibbs.
Will be Tim Gibbs.
Tim, you've been unmuted.
All right, thank you. My name is Tim Gibbs. I'm with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. And I want to thank the council for considering this lifesaving policy this evening. I specifically wanted to thank Mayor Terry as well as city staff for working so hard on this policy to get it to a place where it has the overwhelming support of the public health community. Considering a policy, it's important to know who's in favor of policy and who's against it. You have groups like the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, trying to end the sale of flavored tobacco products because these organizations know that policies like this will save lives. In terms of who is spending money against these policies, it is without a doubt the big tobacco companies. In fact, disgraced tobacco companies like Altria, Juul, and RJ Reynolds spent around $60 million in California and just since 2017. That's $60 million fighting these policies just in the last five years, just in our state. And it's important to ask why that is. Why are they spending such an obscene amount of money? And it's precisely because they know they need to replace the customers their products kill with kids who will become lifelong customers. They need candy and minty menthol flavors to be on the shelves to hook kids. So we urge Rancho Cordova to join its neighbors like the City of Sacramento, the County of Sacramento, Yolo County, West Sacramento, and more than 100 others throughout California who have passed similar laws. And to sort of address what we've heard earlier, there's been no documented data showing that laws prohibit the sale of candy-flavored tobacco products, increase police interactions with members of the community. So we urge the council to pass this ordinance as is. And again, I wanted to thank city staff as well as the council for bringing this lifesaving policy to the dais tonight. Thank you, or the virtual dais.
Thank you, Tim. Our next speaker will be Kimberly Bankston Lee.
Kimberly. Kimberly, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. I'm a Rancho Cordova. I'm Kimberly Bankston Lee from The Soul Project, which is a local African American nonprofit. And we thank you for the work that you're doing to improve and prolong the lives of Rancho Cordova residents. As a young girl, I was sent to the local convenience store called Speedy with a note from my mom saying she gave permission to the clerk to sell me cigarettes because they were for her. The store was across the street from my elementary school, and so I had to go buy cigarettes before walking home. She's gone now. She smoked a half a pack a day. She died 21 years ago at the age of 58 from cancer. And now I'm 58, and that's way too young to die from a product that could have been prevented if it simply wasn't available. And I'm African American, and so is my mother. As we all know by now, flavored tobacco and vape products, especially the flavored menthol, is marketed heavily to vulnerable communities like youth African Americans and people with low income. And these products are often cheaper in these neighborhoods. Tobacco industry opponents deliberately sacrifice black and brown communities, calling these types of policies racist. How is it racist? To protect a class of people who have been targeted by an industry to use a product that knowingly can kill them. This is about protecting kids and black and brown and other communities. Can't wait on the state, who may take months. We can't wait on the FDA, who may take years. It's already been 13 years since they banned other flavors. But menthol was exempted. And one of the speakers earlier said African Americans use menthol the most. So isn't the targeting of the black community by a product like this racism? I think about the countless lives lost in this last 13 years, including my mother's. Rancho Cordova has an opportunity to protect residents in the next 30 days. Sometimes we focus on changing behavior at the individual level. But with comprehensive tobacco policies, we can really focus on the health of the entire community by removing a deadly product from the marketplace. Yes, imagine what the community would be like without tobacco sales, as some of the opponents have said. We prevent addiction and save thousands of lives lost from tobacco-related disease and death. Thank you to the council and thank you for the staff for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Marissa Greenban.
Marissa, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Terry and Rancho Cordova City Council Members. My name is Marissa Greenban. I'm the Director of Tobacco Control Programs at Breed's California Sacramento Region. And I also serve as the Chair of the Policy Task Force of the Greater Sacramento Smoke and Tobacco Free Coalition. This coalition is comprised of public health professionals and community members who are concerned with the impact of the tobacco industry and secondhand smoke issues in Sacramento County. Our goal is to educate and inform localities on tobacco control best practices. I'd be remiss if we didn't again thank the City of Rancho Cordova and its leadership over several years now in moving forward policies and practices to invest in the health and well-being of Rancho Cordova's residents. The measures taken to establish places like public events, dining areas, multi-unit housing, and other areas in the community as smoke-free and removing possession, use, and purchase language from your smoking ordinance have made it really clear that the community's health and well-being is in the best interest and the mind of the city's leadership. And now tonight, the city is considering an ordinance to remove the sale of flavored tobacco products. For decades, the tobacco industry has targeted youth and vulnerable populations with their marketing to garner lifelong customers who are addicted to their deadly products that they have manipulated to become more addictive. Adding flavors to their products has been a longtime tactic of the industry, and they have not slowed their use of this tactic as the vaping epidemic struck the youth in our communities. In Sacramento County, nearly 90% of kids who use tobacco products report using a flavored product. And half of current youth cigarette smokers report using menthol. Of youth who use tobacco products, four out of five of them started with a flavored product. And when asked, the primary reason that youth provide for beginning these products is because the tobacco products came in flavors that they like. Make no mistake, the tobacco industry uses flavored products to addict customers at a younger age so that they can profit from their addiction for longer. The youth and other community members in Rancho Cordova cannot wait for state or federal decisions to protect them against the malicious marketing practices set forth by the tobacco industry, particularly when the industry has spent more than $20 million to put state legislation on hold to buy themselves two years during which they could sell their deadly products in California. It's no question that eliminating the availability of flavored tobacco products in a community promotes public health and reduces the burden of addiction, disease, and death brought by tobacco products in the community. On behalf of the Policy Task Force and the Coalition, we sincerely commend the City of Rancho Cordova for continually being on the forefront of tobacco control issues and for your clear prioritization of the community's health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Next, we'll move on to Jim Knox.
Jim, are you there?
Okay, am I unmuted now?
You are, Jim. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Jim Knox. I am representing the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, which is the advocacy arm of the American Cancer Society. I know there have been some compromises in developing this ordinance, and we urge you to adopt it as it is without any further changes. We very much appreciate the leadership that Rancho Cordova has historically shown in protecting kids in marginalized communities from the predatory practices of the tobacco industry. And we urge you to join the 128 other cities in California that have already successfully adopted this policy to put an end to this despicable tobacco industry practice of using flavors and menthol to addict kids and to target communities of color. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. With that, we'll move on to Dr. Rachel Koenig. Am I pronouncing that right, hopefully?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Rachel Koenig, and I'm a pediatrician in Sacramento. I'd like to express my support for the flavored tobacco ordinance. I see in my own clinical experience that we are definitely in an epidemic of teen vaping. It shows that as many as one in five teens admit to vaping. And the 2019 to 2020 California Student Tobacco Survey revealed that 96% of high schoolers in California who vape use flavored vape products. Vaping in teens has significant health effects, primes the developing brain for future addiction, and leads to increased use of traditional cigarettes later in life. 90% of adult smokers smoked their first cigarette before they were 18 years old. Fruit and candy flavors like blue raspberry, bubble gum, and root beer, along with colorful and convenient packaging, aim to glamorize nicotine use. and convenient packaging, aim to glamorize nicotine use. While these flavorings might seem innocuous, some of the flavoring chemicals have actually been found to be toxic to cells in the airways and in the lungs. Switching from smoking to vaping is not quitting, and it's not safer than smoking. Electronic nicotine products can contain as much nicotine as a pack of 20 traditional cigarettes, which amplifies the opportunity for addiction, particularly when disguised as a sweet treat. Addiction among kids and teens will decrease when tobacco tastes and smells like tobacco. And this flavored tobacco ordinance is an important step in the right direction to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. We'll move on to Alex Winston.
You are muted.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alex Winston. I'm with parents against vaping e-cigarettes. When I spoke to you in April, I shared my story with you.
You are unmuted.
I shared that my son started vaping menthol nicotine products at his high school when he was 15, and he still does nearly four years later. I also shared with you that my husband, who was trying to quit, and he was smoking menthol cigarettes, started vaping menthol. And he died at age 42 of a severe heart arrhythmia with about three packs of cigarettes worth of nicotine in his system and leaving me a single mom of four kids. My husband was mixed race and Black and Native American, which are two of the highest-risk populations to suffer from tobacco-related disease and the predatory marketing of menthol products by the tobacco industry. His life mattered. That being said, sometimes it seems that staff and elected officials receive a lot of concerns and not as many thank yous. On behalf of Pave, I'd like to thank you so much for your leadership and the excellent changes that you made to the proposed ordinance to make it more comprehensive and in line with up-to-date public health policy practices. It's so imperative that you regulate the sale of these harmful products and not the possession of them, and you have done just that. Your leadership will save lives and prevent suffering like the suffering that myself and loved ones have endured. I heard the gentleman earlier say that hurting people hurt people, and I agree, but I will conclude my comments by saying that healing people heal people. And I believe that that's what we're trying to do here tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we'll have Ryan McLinton.
Ryan, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Ryan. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Again, my name is Ryan McLinton. I'm calling as someone who has countless family members who currently live in Rancho Cordova from Talio Village over to Lincoln Village. I have my goddaughter who plays in the softball leagues out there. But more than importantly, I'm someone who greatly cares about the community well-being of our Black and Brown communities that have seen addiction and treacherous harmful health outcomes from tobacco and menthol usage. I've heard a lot of the folks in the community tonight who came into chambers, and I really appreciate them sharing their voices because what they're lifting up is the realities of how we have to cope with so many hard realities, being underprivileged communities, being lower-income communities, dealing with so many levels of trauma with poison because we don't have other alternatives. I think this ordinance, this ban, gives us a chance to start righting that wrong. It removes one barrier and gives us the opportunity to replace something with a healthier option. It helps us recognize what our communities need to really thrive and heal versus continuing to find other ways to mitigate the poison instead of healing that poison. So I really appreciate this ordinance as is written, that this council has been so diligent about bringing it forward. Mayor Terry, I definitely catch your passion around making sure that this gets done effectively as this is what, the second or third time that we've been having this conversation. But again, I really want to echo that this is one building block of meaning. I heard the call to actually ban all tobacco. And I think that everybody who's calling on this call tonight for the most part would love to see that happen. And if this is the first step that allows us to get to that point, then hey, let's make sure that we take that step proudly and boldly under the leadership of Rancho Cordova that's prioritizing the health and well-being of its residents and its family members. Lastly, I'll say, I know that these decisions are tough, especially when you're hearing so many pains from the community, but we're always looking from the lens of being public servants that put the health and well-being of our residents and our community members first. And I really appreciate your leadership in doing so tonight. Thank you, and please, please, please pass this ordinance as written.
Thanks, Ryan. Next, we'll go to Heather Morrow. Although Heather, I just want to clarify because you were starting to speak about item 12.4. Are you wanting to speak about 11.1?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you for having this meeting and for putting it on budget, I mean, on the roster. I do think that it should be up to the people, but it is something that we have to talk about. The elephant in the room is addiction. When you take away one addiction, it doesn't, the addiction doesn't just go away. If we're going to provide healthy alternatives, that's one thing, but to just erase it, I mean, it doesn't work to ban something and only ban safe access. And that's all I have to say on that.
Thanks, Heather. Our next speaker will be Phil Garnier. Am I pronouncing that right?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Phil, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I have to cut off my other...
Yeah, turn off whatever speaker that is that you're listening to.
So good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm Dr. Philip Gardner. I'm one of the co-chairs of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council, who's been in the fight to get menthol and all flavored tobacco products off the marketplace for the last 12 years. This is our framework. Menthol cigarettes and flavored little cigars have been and are the main vectors of death and disease in Black, Brown, and other poor communities of color. The COVID-19 pandemic has just thrown a spotlight on the health disparities and unequal treatment that poor colored communities have faced for hundreds of years in the United States. At this time, nothing could be more helpful in saving Black lives and showing that Black lives mattered than getting menthol cigarettes and flavored little cigars out of the Black community. Let me just say, as we move forward, it's important to understand that menthol is what we call an anesthetic. It has a numbing and cooling effect. It allows for deeper inhalation. The deeper you inhale, the more nicotine you take in, the more nicotine and toxins you take in, the more addicted you become. The more addicted you become, the harder it is to quit. That's why it's put there in the first place. Be appraised that 45,000 African-Americans die each year from the use of tobacco products, and those main products are mentholated cigarettes. Someone mentioned earlier in the comments that we should keep these on the market because it helps to alleviate stress. No, it helps to continue the death and disproportionate use of people of color. There's also the comment that we should wait on the California ballot in November or the FDA, which we will take for years. Let's be clear, these things will not go down immediately. And if we are, and I believe that you are, in favor of supporting the health and welfare of folks in Rancho Cordova, that you will take the steps to get rid of them. The whole idea, and I've heard this earlier, that coca is somehow beneficial to your health. Look, smoking kills you. It doesn't matter if it's a cultural tradition that has been pushed on Black people or used by Middle Eastern people. The bottom line is that cigarettes are bad for you. And I agree with the sentiment that yes, let's get rid of all tobacco products, but let me suggest that the first step, that the first step be to get those out of the places where they're doing the most harm, and that's among communities of color, among women, among folks of LGBTQ persuasion. Having said that, again, I'm Dr. Philip Gardner with the Tobacco Related Disease Research Program and the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. With that, I will stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, doctor. Next, we will have Robert B.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Robert B. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can, Robert. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes. Can you say your full name, please?
Yeah, my name is Robert, and my last name is Ben for short. I'm going with that. I'm calling in behalf of all of us vapers out here in California in general, not just Rancho Cordova, not just Sacramento. Cigarettes is a very, nicotine is a very addictive thing. That is beyond a reasonable doubt and proven beyond a reasonable way in every way. And here you go, you guys want to all of a sudden ban something that everybody's been enjoying for years and years and years. What you are doing is basically foremost opening up a law of entrapment. Entrapment is over 75% of the law in the United States of America. And with that law open of entrapment, once you, if you guys do ban the tobacco products, the nicotine, and someone goes postal and shoots up a whole school, you will not legally have jurisdiction or rights to prosecute that man for murder because you entrapped him. You gave him no choice but to fight as hard as he could to beat the nicotine crave, but he could not. It sent him, it sent him, it sent him lost on a road to hell. I mean, basically, that's what you're doing. America's already starting to fill up with laws being taken over left and right, which are entrapping people to commit crimes for those. And as you've seen in history, I don't know if you guys know Russian history, when the Bolshevik Party went into Russia, they took away all the tobacco products, and they still got their tobacco. I mean, it did not help. It got to the point where they made it legal again after the Bolshevik Party fell. Now, what's the use? What's the waste of taxpaying dollars, let alone putting thousands of people at jeopardy of being killed for no reason just because this guy is feening for a nicotine product that he cannot get because we're no longer a free country with free choices and free thought process? It's just, it's a road to hell. That's all there is, trying to ban something that's been around for hundreds of years, whether it's spiritual or not, is just entrapping many, many, many true lovers of America, lovers of the Constitution into committing crime, whether they like it or not, whether they have control of it or not. And I think it's a bad idea 100%. And once again, 70, over 75% of the law is based on entrapment. You cannot prosecute anybody that is entrapped in doing something, and that's all you're setting up. I mean, it's going to be a waste of taxpaying dollars and God knows how many grieving people. And that's all I got to say. My name is Robert Ben, and I'm part of All of Us or None, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Robert. Our next speaker will be Lori Comstock.
Excuse me?
Our next speaker will be Lori Comstock.
All righty.
Can you hear me?
We can, Lori. You'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. My family has been devastated because of tobacco over the years. I have lost many family members and friends due to the tobacco-related diseases. My brother started smoking, excuse me, my father started smoking as a teen and died at the age of 39 from a tobacco-related illness. I was 13. My brothers were nine and 11, and my sister was only eight when he died. My sister started smoking when she was 13 and died from lung cancer when she was 44. Her sons were 14 and 17 when she died. Her family and mine were totally devastated by her death. My father and sister were not at any of their children's high school or college graduations, weddings, or any other major family events. They never knew any of their grandchildren or sons and daughter-in-laws. My nieces and nephews tell me how much they wish they had known my father, their grandfather. I was with my sister the last couple of weeks before she died. We spent a lot of time together, talking and much time crying about her impending death and that she wouldn't be there for her children and husband. During that time, I promised her I would do everything I could to encourage kids to never start smoking and to help smokers quit before it's too late. I have kept my promise to her and will continue to do so. I want to thank you for all you are doing to protect the community and future generations with this ordinance, and I ask you to pass it tonight, just as it is written. Please put a stop to tobacco-related addictions and deaths. Thank you. I have a picture of my sister. I'm not sure I can show it to you, but...
Unfortunately, no, you can't share your screen, Lori. But if you want to send that in as an email to the council, I think we'd all love to see it. Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you very much for your coming. Next, we'll go to Fiani Johnson. And then our final speaker will be T.W., but Fiani is next. And I hope I'm pronouncing that right. I'm sorry if I'm not.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. You'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Fiani Johnson, and as a woman of color, I come to you today out of concern in regards to the ban on flavored tobacco. It is clear that banning and prohibiting items that should not be an option, based on prohibition laws and bootlegging, I have many concerns of the unintended consequences that will occur in Rancho Cordova, as in other cities across the U.S. As it is today, Black and Brown citizens experience more police contact than any other citizen in the nation. As a person of color, many of us choose menthol-flavored cigarettes. The beating of 14-year-old Elijah Tofono for having a flavored tobacco product, or the murder of Eric Garner because of his sales of loose cigarettes proves our community will be subjected to more violence. It is a federal crime to sell tobacco to minors. So if you're going to ban flavored tobacco products, ban all products or none at all. You may, I mean, it is bad for your health regardless of the flavor. It is an adult's choice as an American to buy and smoke tobacco flavored or not. Since crime in Rancho Cordova has been down, why should we encourage the increase by supporting underground Black markets? They won't care who buys their products. Even the children will have purchase power. The local retailers lose money as well, resulting in a loss of jobs, putting people in an already scarce job market. It is my hope that you look deeper into this, into the research and statistic of other cities with similar bans. Rancho Cordova does not need it. Please allow the Californian voters to decide, as it is our responsibility as citizens, as it is in the 15th Amendment. It is our right.
Thanks, Fiani. Our last speaker will be T.W. And T.W., please state your full name.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, this is T.W. Norman. I'm a longtime resident of Rancho Cordova, concerned parent. I have three children that go to different levels of school throughout the Rancho Cordova school system, including high school. And this, when I heard about this particular ordinance, I was very excited to see that the council was looking at this as an option to try to, you know, stem some of the things that I grew up seeing in some of the neighborhoods that I grew up with, all the targeting, especially the marketing. I grew up in a household where I was secondhand smoke. I got asthma, and I've lived with it for the rest of my life. So that's one of the things, or many things that some people have talked about that you're going to affect by changing this ordinance. And I also just want to make sure that, you know, my kids in this area have the opportunity to go to school, do sports without being aborted with marketing and trying to get them to get on to tobacco. So I really appreciate the body, this council taking the time to look at this ordinance. And it just reiterates the reason why me and my wife chose Rancho Cordova back in the early 2000s, the place to raise our children. Thank you.
Thanks, T.W. That will conclude our comments in Zoom and by phone. I believe our city clerk has some email comments that she wanted to read out.
Yes, the city clerk's office received two emails for item 11.1. The first one was from Monica Alejai. The second is from Thomas Lawton.
Thank you. And I think we heard from Thomas tonight as well. Okay, colleagues, how would you like to proceed? Questions for staff, statements? We've been at this for quite a few years. Some of, some of you, I don't think were here the first time we talked about this subject, but I want to say Linda Correctson, three or four years ago, we started down this path, and the FDA said that they were going to address it, and they didn't. And it's been brought up again and delayed and state votes and everything else. So just from the history standpoint, this is not a new idea for us. But are there questions for staff, or do we just want to get into sharing our thoughts?
You're right. It reminds me of the plastic...
It reminds me of the, um, uh, plastic bag conversation. Did you wanna close the public hearing?
Um, I think we'll do that before we vote. I don't think we need to, do we need to close now? I guess it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Unless, unless you want...
And bring it to the council for discussion and action.
Um, do you mind if I go real quick, Donald? Uh, so is the police chief online?
Yes, councilor, he is.
Um, can you bring him up, please? Chief, he's online. Okay. Um, chief, I, I've never, so the, the, I never heard of, I, I guess someone brought it to my attention. Would this create a black market in the city of Rancho Cordova? And are you, are you concerned if we were to put this into place that would do that in my city?
Uh, councilman, can you hear me, councilman Gaywood?
I can. Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mayor Terry and council members. I can't say whether it would or would not. Um, the banning of many items is going to create another avenue for people to get them. Um, that, that's not something from an enforcement side that we can determine, um, based off of how we proceed forward on a law enforcement side.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a, a, a similar question as well? Um, because, and David could probably speak to this because he was the one that proposed it, but following the incident that was referenced a couple of years ago with youth and one of our pop officers at the time, um, we took steps, and there are further steps being taken ordinance to decriminalize possession and, uh, of, of these products. So this ordinance isn't going after people that have them or that possess them or that even buy them. We're going after and enforcing those that sell it. So this argument that we're somehow entrapping people, I, I don't even wanna get into that argument, but, but the other one's about that this will increase, um, the, the instances with our police officers because they have them or they're using these products is, is false. Um, this, this ordinance takes what we have already done and, and takes it to a new level of decriminalization of possession and use. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we pursued, we pursued decriminalization, um, several years ago for that very reason. We found it was counterproductive, and we did so with, uh, with the full support of, uh, local law enforcement, national law enforcement sources were all endorsing that idea. It seems counterintuitive, but it was, uh, it was generally thought that the criminalization of possession, uh, for kids was just, um, counterproductive to the overall effort. And this was the likely alternative, which we all thought the FDA was about to do. And then we thought the state of California was about to pursue, and neither of that has happened, and here we are. In the meantime, the state of Sacramento has banned flavored, uh, cigarettes and vapes and menthol in twenty-twenty. Sacramento County did so in, uh, this year, twenty-twenty-two. So we're sort of now an island of, uh, ironically, we've led on, on, uh, healthy air regulations in a variety of, of ways. Um, but now we're sort of an island where you can still, uh, purchase these products, and they end up in the hands of kids. So I'm in favor of this ban, although I really do not like government restricting individual choices. But in this case, I think it revol- or it's, uh, an action to protect kids, particularly minority kids and particularly vulnerable kids in our, uh, in our community who end up with possession of, of this and vapes and marijuana and all sorts of things they should not, at the hands of, um, I suppose adults who don't have the best interest of those kids in mind. So I'm happy to support this ordinance, and I would move its adoption.
Uh, Mayor, can I ask the city, uh, staffs repeat? Today, we're passing the ordinance of banning menthol cigarettes and allowing them in hookah bars?
So, um, the ban does include menthol-flavored cigarettes? And for the exemption for the existing hookah bar in the city, it would just be for shisha-flavored tobacco specifically, and it would be only for onsite consumption?
Got it.
But it's allowed under those circumstances.
Sorry. There are two hookah bars within the city? If I, I believe...
I believe there's only one, Mayor Terry.
Oh, okay. I thought we had, I looked into this a while back. Um, so there's one, and it's all flavored tobacco products and vaping products that also include menthol, which has been part of the subject.
Yes, we would ban all of those products, and shisha tobacco specifically would be exempted for that one business that is already open in the city.
Okay. So if, if I were to share my thoughts, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, it, it is really eye-opening to see the large amount of people of color and the African-American community that has come out in support for wanting, uh, these, this flavored tobacco. And, um, i- if you were to peel that onion a little bit, you can see, I, I've done my research on this, and i- it's because, uh, I've seen that they had a lot of access, uh, to flavored, uh, cigarettes. Uh, they were probably given, being given a treat in, in, during playgrounds. And so, uh, now, as adults, it's really hard for them to quit. And I understand them as adults. So as a parent, I wouldn't want my kids anywhere close to having even a whiff of flavored tobacco. And it, this is really easy to get addicted to and really hard to quit. And, and we've all seen menthol cigarettes are the source of addiction for nearly half of all teen smokers. So, um, as an elected official, as a parent, I am completely in alignment with the ordinance to ban flavored cigarettes. Um, there are times when we have to wait for people to vote on this, but if I have a say in this matter, I, I would say we ban it now.
Thanks, Terry. Um, I, I, I would just share that some of the, the statistics that jumped out at me from the public commentary, ninety percent of teens that report using vaping products are using flavored vaping products. One in five teens are reported that, that they have tried or are using vape now. These products were created to create, to, to corner a market and to a, and to a get young people. Um, they are being used by adults, they are being distributed by adults to, to youth. Um, I, I don't believe that, that, that we have a, a bunch of stores out there that are legally selling, or illegally selling these, uh, to youth. They're getting them because they have access to them at their homes and from other family members and other friends and older people that can get it to them. Uh, restricting access to it is exactly that. It restricts access. It means that we should have less of this product in our community. And I don't buy the argument that people, that, that a lot of people just said that this will increase the number of arrests and, and interactions with police. If you're not selling these to kids, you're not gonna be arrested, and you're not going to be cited for the, for these things. Um, you know, a, I, and, and again, I, we've been at this for over four years, in, in my opinion, from talking about it. I, I think we, we had this as part of a, a handful of different comprehensive, um, uh, ordinances that we passed over the years, i- i- starting with, uh, banning vaping indoors, um, which, which won us a lot of awards. Um, we also banned smoking in parks, um, and a lot of other public events and, and other things. And we, and like David said, we've been at the forefront and a leader in this, in this region since I've been on this council, which has been ten years now. Um, and, and I think we, we're playing catch-up, and I don't like it. And I think we're at a point where we said we were gonna do something. The FDA said that they were gonna do something, and the president said they were gonna do something, uh, the former president, um, and did nothing happen. Uh, the state started looking at it. There were multiple bills that had come up, and we had asked for updates over the years about where these things were. And I think we're all just kinda fed up and want this done and want these products out of our communities. And like David said, we're one of the last places you can get it. So we're now becoming the, the place of choice to, to flood the market, um, is here. And I don't wanna be that place. Um, and I'll just leave you with this. Um, you know, I've had family members, some that didn't even smoke. Um, well, I'll just say it, my mother didn't smoke, and she lived her last, the last year of her life on a ventilator before she passed. You don't ever wanna see any of your family members like that. And this product is killing still hundreds of thousands of people a year. Um, and if, if this in, if this inconvenience is adults, for them to have to go find these products in some other place, that's worth it to me if it stops one kid from starting. And so I'm fully in support of the language. I appreciate the, uh, advocacy groups that help us, that helped us improve it over the last few weeks. I wish we would've done that a little sooner, so we could've passed this a month ago, but we are where we are. Um, and, um, I'll, I'll, I'll happily second the motion that's on the table. Is there any other comments or discussions?
Just really quick, um, so...
I, I think Linda has...
Oh, go ahead, Linda. I'm sorry.
Well, no, actually, I was gonna ask Garrett if he got to finish his thought.
Uh, uh...
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Linda. So, uh, being the only African-American on council and understanding where you guys are coming from, I know that menthol is big in our community. And, and this isn't targeted at menthols, it's targeted at flavored cigarettes, first off. And it crushes me because of how biblical people we are and how in the community that this is still running rampant in our community, killing African-American males and females because it's built to smooth the cigarette to bring more tobacco into our system. And it goes directly at us. It's been put in our, it's been flooded our community for generations. Cool cigarettes? I mean, I grew up in the area, and that's where you got, you got, you pick up a pack of menthols, and that's what my, you know, uh, my, my dad was in the, uh, the Air Force, they would give them packs and take them into war. And then they came back super addicted to the packs of cigarettes. And I'm sad that, that this is still in my community, and I wish it wasn't. And this is not targeted at black people, and I've never heard of someone killing a school because they wanted a hit of a cigarette or a cool. Um, that, those two instances of, of terribleness for our community when that happened to those poor kids is one thing, but I just don't wanna see this type of thing running rampant in my city. And it's sad because I, I feel like you guys think we're trying to target African-Americans. And I would never let that happen in my city. But I won't let, but this, this, this product that's taking some of my family members away from me, i- it's time for it to go. It's hurt enough of us. And I understand adults can do it, and I know you can go either into other cities and pick it up. But in the city of Rancho Cordova, we're not gonna have flavored tobacco in our city. And, and I'm sad about that. I'm sorry that you, you feel that we were targeting you. Like, we're not, we're not coming for you, but this has hurt enough of our community and was used to target us directly that we need to let it go.
The liberals don't hurt, huh?
No, they, eh...
Uh, we don't wanna do that, Garrett.
Okay. So, that being said, um, we can move it along, Linda.
So, um, yeah, my, I really agree with, um, what Siri and David would say, um, or said. Um, I appreciate the, uh, both sides, both perspectives being, uh, presented. Um, but we have for, we have six teenagers and young adults in our family here in Rancho Cordova, and, um, I don't want this anywhere near them. It does, from my perspective, um, the line was crossed when it, it, when you think about, um, providing flavors like bubble gum and blueberry, okay? That's ridiculous. It's not necessary.
You know, corn poop.
I think there's a jelly bean called that. But, uh, yeah, so I, I am, I went back and forth, uh, like David. Um, I thought seriously about leaving it to the voters, but decided that, um, it is time for Rancho Cordova to continue to take the lead on an issue like this. So I'm in support also.
I think we've all spoken and shared our thoughts on this. We have a motion by Sander, a second by Hig. Um, Volka, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. Motion is agreed to, and we'll likely come back for a second reading on consent, uh, our next council meeting. Thank you, colleagues. So with that, we'll move on to regular calendar items. Um, we have item twelve point one that myself, councilmember Gatewood, and councilmember Pulapati will need to recuse ourselves from.
Uh, council, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's twelve point two. I apologize, not twelve point one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Could we take up twelve point four? As I think we have people in the audience for that item.
You wanna take that out of order?
Uh, uh, yeah, I don't think you can see that, or perhaps you can't see that from your viewpoint there, Mr. Mayor. But I think twelve point four, hands?
I can't see who, who's there to talk about it.
Yeah, there's about four hands in the air for, five hands in the air for twelve point four.
Um, colleagues, without objection, we can take up twelve point four. Everybody's okay with that. Is that all right?
Okay.
Okay. Let's move to item twelve point four, out of order, without objection. We will discuss the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Community Enhancement and Investment Fund allocation for Measure H, the, and Measure, well, yeah. Um, and so I'm gonna turn that over to Stacy Delaney, who hopefully somebody warned her, and she's in the room? Probably not, so maybe we need to give her a sec.
She is coming, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to keep our staff on their toes.
I'm trying to...
I assume anybody who wants to comment on this item has turned in a card to the clerk?
Yeah. So, so I would suggest anybody, again, for the Community Enhancement Fund, if you're in Zoom, please raise your hand now. And I would just remind, uh, as we have done in the past, if, i- if, if your item has been recommended for approval, um, or is in the allocation now, um, while we would appreciate, while we appreciate, thank yous, we'd much rather have those by email and not as public comment tonight. So please limit your comments to things that you disagree about with, with staff or have additional requests of your request. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy.
She's on her way, Mayor Terry.
Oh, okay. I see this lineup already. My apologies. And again, if you are wanting to make a comment about item twelve point four and you're in Zoom, please raise your hand now. This will be your only chance to raise your hand. And, um, if you have not already filled out a speaker, please fill out and give it to the speaker if you're in the room. And if you are on the phone, a reminder, hit star nine to raise your hand.
Mayor Terry, she's walking in the council chambers.
Thank you. Sorry, Stacy, we went out of order, but hopefully they can need to get to go home earlier.
That's okay. Thank you. I just had to come from upstairs, so just give me one second to get settled.
No, the problem, I know those binders are big.
Yes. So thank you, Mayor, Mayor Terry and council, Stacy Delaney with the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund. So tonight's presentation is gonna recap the changes that have been made to date based upon prior council direction. I'm also gonna discuss and present to you three items that we carried over from the last council meeting on May tenth. And then lastly, we'll go over the next steps in the grant process. So these two images probably look familiar. This was the parking lot from the May tenth meeting. Um, this slide contains both the front of the screen as well as the back of the screen, and I'm gonna go ahead and go over the actions that we took on May tenth. So to begin with, um, application number one, which had to do with STEAM, the recommended amount did not change based upon, based upon the discussion and the council direction given. Um, we will reach out to the applicant again to remind him that if he's interested, he can apply for a micro grant because we thought this would be a good way to pilot that program. Um, with regards to application number nine, which was the Western Swing, um, the recommended amount will stay the same in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in terms of the budget, but will show the full seven thousand two seventy-three out of the additional revenues we received in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, with regards to application number ten, which was submitted by Phoenix Productions, better known as Rise Up Theater, the recommended amount will stay the same in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, with regards to application number twelve, this was the one submitted by the Sacramento Children's Museum. The exhibit funding will show zero in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, but the funding amount of forty-six thousand four fifty will show up again out of additional revenues received in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. The general operations support for the children's museum didn't change. That full amount will be shown in fiscal year... change. That full amount will be shown in fiscal year 2223 with regard.
Stacy, can I ask really quick?
Sure.
The stuff that you're covering right now is not on the slide in front of us?
Yes, it is. It is.
Oh, I'm just seeing the highlighted stuff. Okay, now I see it. I'm sorry. I gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I think we're on Track Club, which was application 29. So that recommended amount changed from $20,000 to the full $25,000 amount. That will be shown in the fiscal year 2223 budget. The made the wrestling club, there was no change to the recommended amount. Um, the two that are highlighted in yellow, we're going to cover in more detail in a few slides. So I'm going to skip those two. Uh, application 49, which was Save the Snakes, that recommendation stayed the same. And again, we're going to reach out to that applicant to let them know they can apply for a micro grant if they want to pilot the program in Rancho Cordova area.
I'm pretty sure it did. And I'm pretty sure it was nixed completely off and Siri like jumped back and shut down her machine. She was so scared by looking at a rattlesnake. So I think that one just needs to go away and find a different city. Like, just away, just away. Just work on that.
Careful, you sound like St. Patrick.
I'm just saying, just whacking snakes, drinking beer.
So on to 51, which is the Youth Career Centers, which was an FCCP application. The recommended, recommended amount stayed the same. Same for Sacramento Splash, that recommended amount stayed exactly the same. The Sevita International Robotics, um, submit all, the recommended amount changed from $16,250 to $17,600. And that change is reflected in the 2223 budget amount. With regards to the speech and debate, um, it's going to show zero in fiscal year 2223, but we're going to fund the $7,500 out of the fiscal year 2122 additional revenues received. And that would be for a one-year pilot of the program. And with regards to application 66, which was the Moose Lodge, the recommended amount is going to show zero in 2223, but we're going to, um, include it in the additional revenues received in 2122 at the $68,000 amount. And the Whisker Warriors Animal Defense Fund Grant Application, that recommendation didn't change. There's just a few more. With regards to the Cordova Community Council Foundation's RCA feasibility study, the amount changed from $30,000 to a not to exceed $45,000. The Boy Scouts of America, specific to Troop 1601, the recommendation changed from $4,800 to $4,825.
Twenty-five bucks.
That 25 isn't there, yes. Um, Salvation Army, the recommended amount will show zero in 2223 because we're going to show the full $5,000 out of the additional revenues in fiscal year 2122. Sacramento Valley Spark, the recommendation stays the same. We have already reached out to him about potentially applying for a micro grant if he would like to do that. And the Elks Lodge recommendation shows zero in 2223, and the full $45,245 will show up as a budget amendment for fiscal year 2122.
So the only one that doesn't, uh, jive with my memory.
Wait, David, David, really quick, before we dive into council comments, uh, let's go ahead and take public comment.
That was a comment for staff. It was a question.
Right. Let's, let's get all of the public comment out first and then we'll take questions for, for staff. So Stacy, do you have, uh, speaker cards?
Yes.
Courtney Conklin, are you in the room? Okay, if you can come forward, we'll start with Courtney. Following Courtney will be Rebecca Sloan. Following Rebecca will be Danielle Mercado. And then following Danielle will be Melanie Freer. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Conklin, and I'm the founder, president, and artistic director of Rancho Cordova Rise Up Theater Company. If approved for the full CEF grant, funds will be utilized to continue development and construction of a theater complex in an already existing building for the benefit of Rancho Cordova Rise Up Theater Company, as well as other existing art groups such as Hummingbird Theater and Ranching Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band. Our goals include but are not limited to increasing community appreciation and participation for the arts, enhance community pride and the image of Rancho Cordova as a community where theater, music, dance, photography, art, and film are prominent, to promote quality of life and civic engagement for citizens of all ages, and to provide arts education for all ages. By doing so, we will bring a continuing stream of audiences from communities outside of Rancho Cordova and increase patrons for, for surrounding businesses. A 99-seat theater would provide the ability to utilize both union and non-union-based actors at the minimum union cost, as well as keeping the costs affordable for a nonprofit group. Costs for rights to shows can range between $1,500 to $5,000 for a 99-seat venue. Any, any larger would not be financially possible due to the additional costs that go into productions. Curt Haven is currently assisting us in finding a suitable location. There are currently no suitable locations in Rancho Cordova to support ongoing theatrical productions. Known existing locations include the amphitheater, where weather issues and security are an issue, the Performing Arts Center, where there is an extremely cross, cost prohibitive, and they do not allow long-term use for shows. CalCap does not support the theatrical time and needs as well as size restrictions. The Mac is not suitable for long-term use and does not support the needs for a theater. Hagan Community Center is not suitable for long-term use due to community use. And the former only existing known small theater space is Tommy T's, and they're asking for $14,000 a month. A theater production takes on average 1.5 to 2 months of four to five-day rehearsals and one month of weekend shows, five to Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. These details may be invisible to the magic of performing arts but are so critical to all of our success. We are committed to making Rancho Cordova a place for the arts, theater, music, dance, in addition to the art, photography, and film in place today. With your support of our full funding request, we can make this vision come, come to life for Rancho Cordova Rise Up Theater Company, Hummingbird Theater Company, Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band, and provide additional youth, young adults, and adults alike education in the arts. Tonight with me was Danielle Mercado, president, former, or president, founder, and artistic director of Hummingbird Theater, Melanie Freer, president of Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band, as well as Rebecca Sloan, president and founder of Cordova Accelerated Performing Arts, to share their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Um, this is Rebecca Sloan. Would you grant me the liberty of reading the brief comment that was made by Danielle Mercado before she had to leave?
Please.
As part of your minutes?
We'd love to hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, this is from Danielle Mercado. She had a three-week-old baby with her and she had to leave early. "I am in support of Rise Up Theater Company's grant proposal to assist them in opening a space where members and groups of performing arts can, can access. We also look forward to future collaboration and projects done with Rise Up Theater. If we can provide a space for community groups to rehearse and perform, it will elevate the art footprint in Rancho Cordova as a whole. We plan on using this space as often as possible to assist us in providing quality content and arts education and entertainment. I do not consider Rise Up Theater Company as competition, but as an ally in the arts in Rancho Cordova, we all are stronger if we collaborate, work together, and help lift each other up. Together with other arts groups, if we have free access to a commercial space, we will be able to produce a lot more content with more consistency rather than all struggle separately to fund available rehearsal performance spaces. Help us by providing funds so we can have a central location and all benefit from it." That was from Danielle Mercado, Hummingbird Theater Company. I would just add that, um, when we did the program for young adults and youth, uh, pre-COVID over at Cordova High School, we were able to pull together approximately 40 young folks to participate either onstage or backstage in all ways. It was, it was a significant struggle for me to pull together sufficient volunteers to make this, um, program sustainable from other performing arts colleagues. I'm very delighted since then to have had the opportunity to work with Hummingbird and now with Rise Up, um, Rise Up Theater. Courtney Conklin's proposal for Rise Up represents high-quality productions, collaboration with other theater groups and performing arts, and a dedicated space which lifts a significant burden on these creative efforts financially and in every other way. I can say from my experience, having to just scrounge around the community to find space to rehearse, to be rehearsing outside with kids and rehearsing in rooms that were a third the space of what we needed in the middle of summer with no air conditioning, it's not just about the rehearsal space. That just makes everyone exhausted. And these are supposed to be creative efforts. And it's, it, it did create a burden that's above and beyond the cost and the volunteer efforts to put something like this together. I would say that banding together, Rise Up, working with other groups can help ensure performances for residents of the city and in on, on an ongoing basis, and contribute to the city realizing its arts master plan. And I would just say from my personal experience, it wasn't about passion or commitment or people loving it. It just can be too hard when you're doing it on your own. So the idea that now we've got two or three years of programs that struggled similarly and we've learned from those lessons. And I was delighted when I had the opportunity to read Courtney's business model because many of the struggles I had and I experienced with Danielle were addressed without us even having had that conversation with her. And it's not often that I've had the opportunity, not just in this community but in others, to work with, um, performing arts groups that have both the business smarts, the legal smarts, and the ability to put on a great production. And if any of you have a chance next weekend to go see the final performances of Exit the Body, I think you will see that for yourself. Thank you.
Next speaker is Melanie Freer.
Hello. Um, I'm Melanie Freer of the Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band. I'm the president. Um, RC, RCCB is probably an easier way to put this because it's so long. Is thrilled to be in a partnership with Rise Up Theater Company. Um, Rise Up Theater Company has been supporting us with photography, videography, live streaming our concerts, as well as performers and vocalists joining in our concerts as characters to enhance our shows. Um, RC RCCB is providing a music conductor for their musicals and will help find musicians to play in the orchestra for their musical productions. Um, RC RCCB and Rise Up Theater Company reciprocate, um, promoting one another as well. Rehearsal space. The performing arts in Rancho Cordova have historically had difficulty with finding, retaining, and having reliable rehearsal and performance spaces. Originally, we had to rely on the space within the school districts for rehearsal space. Once COVID happened, this plan required adjustments because the schools no longer allowed outside groups. When we were at the school, we were at the mercy of the school schedule. If schools closed for a holiday, spring or summer break, we couldn't rehearse for, uh, the place we were contracted. This posed many difficulties when we needed to have rehearsal, but the space was not accessible. The Cordova Community Council kindly provided assistance in helping secure rehearsal space for both RC RCCB and the Rancho Cordova Symphony de Oro, with utilization of a separate Measure H grant specifically for rehearsal space at the Mandarin's Music Center for a couple of years. There are not plans at this time for rehearsal, uh, rehearsal space at the end of that contract. The challenges of obtaining and securing a rehearsal space is daunting and, uh, daunting undertaking. By having a secure shared space for the performing arts of Rancho Cordova, we wouldn't be at the mercy of the school schedule of the districts or bingo nights at the Mandarin Center. Yes, our rehearsals on Mondays coincide with bingo fundraising, which poses problems for parking for our members, as well as trying to avoid the smoke from the bingo players. Performance locations. RC RCCB has difficulty finding performance locations other than the amazing space that Corian Plaza has, um, given us.
I told you.
Since use of the, um, Rancho Cordova PAC, Performing Arts Center, has been very difficult since we are again at the mercy of the allowances by the school district. We've had several performances canceled because PAC decided to change their agreement for a performance date with us because a teacher may need this PAC for something else that day. This in turn makes it difficult for RC RCCB to retain our promise to the city of Rancho Cordova and the Cordova Community Council to provide free performances to our community, not to mention the disappointment, um, for our members of our organization, and is very cost prohibitive, as you know. Value of a shared space. The Rancho Cordova community needs a reliable location for rehearsals and performances for the performing arts groups.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. RCCB is excited to work with our fellow performing groups. We really need, um, a rehearsal space, a performance area, audience seating, and temperature-controlled storage for all of our equipment. Thank you.
Mayor Terry, that's all the speaker cards that I have for this item.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move over to Zoom. And our first commenter will be Heather Morrow. Then we'll move on to Sasha Kinney, then Sherinder Gil. Heather, you've moved into the room. Uh, go ahead, unmute. You'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you for meeting tonight and thank you for considering funding. I emailed you recently, uh, actually last night, um, to reconsider, um, the proposal I had made for Kit and Cut, uh, regarding, uh, health concerns for one of our, um, presenters. So I whittled down the ask. And I would just ask you, in regards to, um, your efforts to help prevent homelessness, um, helping to give more workforce opportunities and training and development to people in Rancho Cordova, can only help people solidify and stabilize to stay off the streets and to, um, further their education, to further the ability for their families to have real strong roots and stay here in Rancho Cordova and make it the best city possible. Please consider that. And, um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to Sasha Kinney.
Hi, uh, nice to see you again. I just wanted to, and actually, I think Stacy has information that was sent from our community, um, engagement officer, but I just wanted to touch on, um, the, uh, the library funding.
This is application 47.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Um, so just, just a couple points. So one is that, um, I, I understand the concern with funding, uh, program, um, that looks like it should be funded by the school district. I want to reiterate that the state of California does not fund school libraries. I also want to state, which I didn't last time, is that even if, let's say, the school district was able to fund all of our libraries well, and they all had new books, Folsom has a robust PTA, and they are able to, um, provide all kinds of donations and extra hours for staff. And it's inequitable. There's a huge inequity in Folsom, Cordova. And this could support that. This could better even the playing field. And then I also wanted to touch on that, um, there aren't actually a lot of school library grants, believe it or not. A lot of them that, that exist are micro grants, so they're $750, uh, $500 here. And they're not at the scale that, that I am looking for, that I would like to fund all of the, the schools in the district. Um, so, and even, um, there are some national ones, but of course, like the, the Barbara Bush Library Grant is extremely competitive. And the American Library Association Grants are extremely competitive. And so this is a local grant that would help local schools. And I just think it fits.
Thank you. Uh, our next, our next comments will be coming from Sherinder Gil. Hi, Sherinder, you're in the room. Uh, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Well, good evening. So, um, I'm here to make a comment on our proposal for the Professional Pathways Grant. So this grant is one of our most recent partnerships with VSP, and we want to be able to continue this into the next funding year. FCCP is proposing to provide professional pathways to students who are wanting direct career placement with VSP. And as our recent partner, we want to be able to utilize an F, FCCP Student Engagement Specialist to provide one-on-one to help with outreach, recruitment, enrollment, and ongoing support to students during the VSP training. Enrolled students will be provided further support to address the barriers that arise while in training, pre and post completion of the VSP Professional Pathways Training. We believe that this is a direct investment into Rancho Cordova's workforce development and filling vacancies in an in-demand labor market occupation. The goal of this project is to integrate opportunities for students to participate in professional pathways. We will continue to utilize our assessments that we are provided through the Youth Career Center. So this is where we would target students who have expressed, addressed interest in wanting to be placed in VSP, provide additional support, look at completing one-on-one VSP career planning, also have further enrollment and student engagement support, identify planning, also have further enrollment and student engagement support, identify any needs that are needed for the student to be able to complete, and then provide post-placement support, 90-day placement as well, to ensure that the student has successful placement and address any other barriers or support services that might be needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've completed our public comments.
Mayor Terry.
David, you had a question?
Mayor Terry, I just want to acknowledge that we did receive one public comment via email and that was from Heather Morrow.
Thank you. And I believe we heard from Heather more than once tonight. David, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is regarding item number 10 and we had several speakers here at the podium talking about that.
Can we bring this slide back because we're all on the same page?
It was that first image. And I think we've got wrote down as funded 30, but what did not get written down was a plan to revisit this idea because I think as we talked about it just last Tuesday, six days ago, it was a big, complex proposal that potentially went over multiple years and we weren't sure we could handle it just by saying, we'll give them 30 now and come back later. So I thought we left it saying we would take it up later in the year.
That is our plan, yes.
Okay.
I will give the same feedback on that, too, and also remind folks that there is a planned black box theater in the community center, or whatever we're going to call it. It would probably have dedicated space for all of these organizations and it's something that's planned for that, you know, will hopefully come in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, it's probably a couple of years away. But what I really took away from this application, though, and particularly the presentation tonight, because I think the presentation tonight has built on what the application was a little bit. This is really a big bargain, is what we're looking at because for, I think the ask here was 150,000 for year one. For that, we get the partnership of multiple, the collaboration of multiple theater groups that we have funded over the past several years independently of each other. This is an opportunity to get them to collaborate. And what this feels like to me is when we had a whole bunch of artists come to us and say, hey, we want an arts council. And we said, go somewhere, go to the community council, organize yourselves, and come up with simple projects you can do together. And what has come of that actually is this, that this is like another reflowering of that same opportunity. And not only that, the theater groups have now brought in the musical groups, which are a part of that flowering of the arts community when we put them together as an arts council. I think this also supports our arts plan. And of course, adding a venue has been something we have heard about here forever. As long as we have tried to fund theater and other arts here, we have had these venue discussions. And the guts of this proposal, this $150,000 proposal, was let's find some vacant space, an old store, whatever, an old open space somewhere that is not sought after and is not being rented, and goodness knows we have some of these in Rancho Cordova. Turn that into the simplest black box kind of space we can, which allows seating and, you know, rudimentary lighting, and just let these theater folks go crazy with it, see what they can do. And I think if we did that now, we would be setting them up for eventual tenancy in our larger theater that's probably a couple of years away at this point, as well as setting up hopefully for greater collaboration with the school district. We have to make a note here that, you know, we've heard this repeatedly, that the schools are not a workable location. We've heard it from multiple people here tonight. But I think if we create this spot somewhere, this is like an incubator for theater, it's going to be an incubator for music groups. I'm actually, at this point, in favor of saying, let's not do 30 now and talk about more later. Let's authorize the 150 now and then have further discussions about this as it moves forward. I would just hate to delay this opportunity, which I think is a bargain, it's great collaboration, it follows up on our arts plan, and it gives us another venue.
So I would speak in support of that also. Having quite early on wanted to be an actor.
How could I have known Linda that long, this long, and not know?
No, I mean, I mean, really early.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's a story in itself. However, I'm very much aware of what it does take to put together something like this and when Rebecca and Catherine?
Danielle. Courtney.
Courtney, sorry. All right, so when the three of them talked about the challenges in putting together something, and when you add on top of that the fact that they need space, and quite frankly, it strikes me that if we were to wait until we actually get something on the ground at the Civic Center, that we could easily lose this. And this is another thing that we need as an asset here in Rancho Cordova because of the incredible, not only broad, obviously broad, appeal, but the fact that it serves organizations that are already trying to find an appropriate place to exist. And, you know, in today's real estate market, if they go find something, they're going to need some seed money. And so if we, I would agree with David, if we fund it, but then continue, I'm not sure defer is the correct word, but continue the discussion until they can come back with a potential space, just, you know, kind of park it for a little while.
I think there's a chicken and egg problem.
Yeah, this is definitely a process issue.
They can't get the space unless they have a commitment from us saying, we actually have real money.
Right.
And they, we won't give them real money unless they show us, you know, we've got a space.
No, I agree.
I think we've got to commit what they asked for.
It's very much a process issue.
Up front, to allow them to complete.
Yeah.
I wouldn't disagree with either of you. My, but David, I kind of see it as a chicken and egg as well, but kind of it's this idea of, and I'm sure a good Realtor and Kurt and some other people will be able to figure this out, but my concern, and I've said this in like the Parkway Conservancy where we're trying to allocate funds to acquire land, yet we told them what our do not exceed was upfront. And oh, by the way, the sales price was every dime that we allocated. So on the flip side of that, you know, is there less expensive than that? So I get, we can do a do not exceed and I have no problem with that. It's just, my concern becomes all of a sudden, well, now everybody's shopping for 150,000 because that was the number they were given when there may be something that is, you know, more affordable at a different price. But I have no problem with it. At this point, I think I heard one of the speakers say, there is no site like this to acquire or to lease right now. So I don't know if we're, if this is even possible, but I definitely don't want to stop anybody from thinking big and coming back to us with a good proposal. And to be frank, even if we allocate this, it could take them nine months to even find what it is and we may be into the next budget cycle by then.
Given the amount of oddball empty spaces we have around here, you know, not in any necessarily at any one location, but I'm aware of one of the locations that they were looking at, which we think is committed to something else already. And so just, you know, just be open in your search for a space. And as David says, you know, be prepared to take that literal, this will be a white box, hopefully, and turn it, you know, turn it into something that really works for everybody. Because what they really need is shelter, HVAC, gas, plumbing, water, utilities, and then go for it.
So Cyrus, I assume you could manage this in a reasonable way? I mean, they're going to have to show good faith to a landlord, saying, yeah, we've got, we've got support from the city to pay this rent, we're not relying on future ticket sales to pay the rent. And so I understand, like, the do not exceed idea that's coming from Mayor Terry. But that seems workable to you?
We always, we always do take a very reasonable approach. I think the, you know, not knowing exactly what kind of facility or what locations are available, I think it would be good, you know, as long as we're clear on the desire and the intentions of the council, we can ask the team to look at different options. And then we already have directed us to bring this back at some appropriate time. So when we have more information, when we have more data and we understand exactly what it is that can possibly work for the theater and how we can fit that in the budget, then we will bring it back at that time.
Yeah, and maybe a way of doing this, and I don't know if this is something that Adam can address, but maybe there's a way, and I know there's a lot of, you know, comments today about open government and full disclosure and stuff, but this is a reason that we negotiate in closed session when we talk about real estate. And I don't know if there is a way for us to, even the city to engage in the lease to where it's something that we can negotiate so that we can cut the best deal for the city instead of having it out in the open where a nonprofit agency that has been told this is how much your checkbook is, and then whatever landlord that they're talking to knows how much they have to spend. So I'm just, I'm following here, if staff can think about those approaches and just make sure that we're not, we're not overpaying just because somebody threw out a number.
Yeah, and I think some of that number would be for the facilities, whatever they would need to alter, so TIs or some of that funding is probably going to be for some level of equipment. And then, of course, they're going to generate revenue and sponsorships as well, so it's a match in that sense. So I would suggest.
And if that's all of, if that's all of the money, I would also say that that, just comparing it to what the Children's Museum is looking at for some tenant improvements is woefully underfunded for all of that.
Yeah, this is pretty barebone stuff, I think. I think theater groups are pretty used to operating in those conditions, in my experience, anyway.
Yeah, it's called build your sets. That's where we all went out and dabbed on them with the sponge paint.
I think, Mr. Mayor, another comment to add, we also understood from the applications that the application that there is a private funding commitment as well. So it would be good to see how that comes to fruition and how we can partner with them with this endeavor.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. So I think you can accommodate that request from council. Council, are there other feedback, questions for?
You know, we put these other two, and I think these are my requests, or I may have originated the request about the PE and the book recovery and expansion. And I just heard that book recovery comment very clearly. It's still ringing in my ears, as a matter of fact, difference between one end of the school district and the other with regard to how many books are available in the library. That's very difficult for me to swallow. But I understand that there are PTAs at the other end of the district that could generate more resources. And I, and we have in the past stepped up and said, you know, that's one thing we can do with community enhancement, is try to level the playing field between that end of the district and this one. So if that is indeed the case, and I would almost think we want to maybe verify that with the superintendent, and I think the PE stuff is going to fall into that same category if I'm not mistaken, that that is something that they get support from PTAs at Folsom schools that they do not have support, equivalent support here for.
Do you want me to cover the additional information I have now or when I get to it?
Yes, if you did, I didn't realize you had any.
Yeah, I still have a few more slides, but I was letting you guys review that. I'll just skip ahead and then we can go backwards.
Thank you, Stacy.
So with regards to application 43, which is the one that had to do with the physical education equipment and application 47 for the book recovery or the library program, I did reach out to the school district to find out, you know, what can they use their ARPA or one-time COVID relief funds for or not. They cannot use the COVID one-time funds for PE equipment. They do primarily rely on either a PTA or a PTO to fundraise to support PE equipment throughout the district. What the district provides funds for is generally to replenish what they consider consumable equipment. With regards to application 47, which is the library one, in addition to what Sasha already shared, most of the one-time funds that the district received went directly to support learning loss. So for them, it was things such as staffing costs for additional needs like for contact tracing, one-time bonuses that were paid to staff, improved safety and sanitization costs, so things such as replacing the HVAC systems and enhanced filtration systems, et cetera, as well as the summer school programs that took place last summer, as well as the summer school program that will take place this summer. And those, again, are to mitigate the learning loss. To reiterate what Sasha said, California does not provide direct funding for school libraries. And so schools generally seek either parent donations, PTO, PTA donations, they can use some Title I funds, and they can seek outside grants as well. So they're looking to fund kind of that optimal ratio of books to students under this request.
Then my recommendation would be that we fund both. If they have no other resources to apply to this and they're supplying that, these two needs with PTA activity at the other end of the district.
So the additional comment they gave me regarding PE is that with a reduced amount of 25,000, they could address the greatest need. And Sasha had previously indicated that she supported staff's recommendation on application 47, which was the 75,000 a year over four fiscal years.
And the idea that PE equipment doesn't expire has to be stated by someone who's never seen a PE class. But I think that's our obligation, that would be core to Measure H in my mind, trying to level the playing field for our kids.
David, we would have an opportunity, you know, we could bring this up in our two-by-two with.
We could.
Superintendent and bring this back as a end-of-the-year revise to the budget, too.
Yeah.
As we go through these contracts, things tend to creep up for, you know, the revenue generated into being higher sometimes than we expected. So there is some more time to have conversations with them, but I wouldn't want to just jump the gun over what the superintendent is saying they need help with. As much as, so first, I'm fine with the book the way it is, if that's also what staff is recommending. And then keep the conversations going about it.
So Stacy, I think I heard you say 25 for 43 and 75 for 47?
Yes, and we've already budgeted the 75 for 47. And with regards to application 43, we could take it out of the additional revenues we have in fiscal year '21, '22 as like a one-time expense.
Could we fund 40? Well, we can determine that later, but you could potentially fund 47 out of our ARPA dollars.
Potentially, I would just need to check on that.
Yeah, but that applies to a whole bunch of stuff in this, in this funding stream, potentially.
So I haven't had a chance to get to the AE gaming thing, not that I want to go through with all the very depressing state of our stuff. And since everyone's in a ticked mood, it's a great time to talk about it. I need a little bit more time, but if we were to put aside, like, like, I had to go to every event. I wanted to put this all together with staff and get the person in here to give them at least a budget and a quote, but I know we don't like too Satan amount, but can I, can I put like a buffer of something and then just, before I bring that back to the person, of like, you know, 30 or 40,000, so I can try to put this type of organization together? I just haven't had a chance because I know we're overwhelmed with everything we've got going on right now.
You know, the problem is, could you actually tell Stacy how you would spend 30 or 45,000?
Yeah, actually. I'm almost, yeah. What you would do, well, actually, I could. So, I mean, because it's developing and putting together an e-gaming teams in different schools in our city. And so what we would do is we'd be one of the first people to actually have this very cool event that's like, it would almost like be, you know how we put away like 50 grand to start up basketball? We kept, you know, dribbling the ball and kept trying. It's the same thing, except for there's more kids that would do this buy-in and then it would be inner-city, inner-school districts playing each other in video games to go to the pro. And so I have the pro guy that set it up for all the high schools and colleges that wants to come into Rancho Cordova and set it up. And of course, we'd have to go out to bid and all this other stuff, but we could actually put that together to where we'd have an actual e-gaming sports stuff. It's very cool. It's very hip. It's very with it. Our kids are going to learn how to play Nintendo Switch, Nintendo Wii, but got to remember, there's colleges that are now recruiting for video gaming.
Yeah, I, Garrett, I would also say that in our two-by-twos. Yeah, I, Garrett, I would also say that in our two-by-twos, this has been brought up with all of them last year. I know that Siri had brought up e-gaming or esports, and it turns out there's, it's a sanctioned sport by CIF, and a lot of the school districts and schools have teams and have funding and coaches and other things. So I think part of it, too, is trying to figure out where we want to fit into all of it. So maybe instead of, because this isn't the last time we can talk about whether it's Measure H or ARPA or the budget. Because I know we had council-led initiatives, but a lot of us have kind of went out and found the partner and brought them in and had them ask for funding. If it takes you like till the summer to come up with an idea, that, I mean, this isn't the only time that we get to talk about the budget. If there's some idea that needs to come along, we need to pass a budget by the end of June to be in compliance, but that doesn't mean that if you have an idea in August that we can't try to look at somehow how to fund it.
Okay, that's cool. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing my chance to get some money for it.
Yeah, and what I would also say is that, like, figuring out where we want to fit into that, if the infrastructure already exists at St. Cordova High, then do it. And like, I know we brought this up in Elk Grove, and they're like, yeah, we've got leagues, we have, you know, it's part of our, the Assistant Superintendent over sports and like, they've got schools that are a part of it, and they go to tournaments, and some of it, it's just like, you know, they sell candy bars to try to go to these tournaments. You want to help them so that they don't have to, you know, try to, you know, scrounge together the funding to go to some of these things. So maybe things like that, like in Elk Grove, maybe give scholarships to students that want to do it that live in Rancho. At, you know, Cordova High, it may be, you know, sponsoring the team in some way, right? And it already exists. Like, we, you know, I guess my point would be, you're really, let's say, you're really interested in like baseball. That doesn't mean you go out and start another little league, right? Because we already have one.
No.
So maybe take stock of everything that's there first before we start running at it, you know?
Okay. So, but if I get the guy and we get, there's still a chance to get at the money, even if we don't approve it right now.
We could, but again, I would strongly urge you to also take stock of not just the person you've met, but what everybody else is doing, and that we're not duplicating efforts.
Yep, I feel you.
Other questions or comments for staff or direction? Or Stacy, did you have anything else to cover? Sorry, you went over those two slides, I thought that's what we were doing.
If council wants to vote on these specific items, at least 43 and 47, that would be helpful. So when we come back on June 6, we will have already discussed all grants.
And the change to 10.
Okay. So, go ahead, David, you're going to make a motion?
Yeah, so I would move the changed item number 10, as previously reported. Set item 43 at $25,000 and item 47 at $75,000.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Siri?
Yep. I'm sorry, that was Linda, that was messed up, I apologize.
I'm sorry. I have anybody's picture in front of me right now, sorry. So I have a motion by Sander, a second by Budge. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye, okay. Those items are agreed to?
I'm just going to briefly cover the last remaining slides. This just recaps the changes that we've already discussed, just so you can see it in budget format. These are the changes that will be reflected in '22, '23, plus the things that you just voted on, of course, are not shown here. These are the changes to the '21, '22 budget that we've already discussed. This just visually shows you that we moved the $125,000 item from the Clean Water Outreach Program, moved it into pavement rehabilitation, but again, it doesn't change the overall budget allocation for Public Works. This is a slide that we just covered. And just to recap, we are going to come back on June 6 for a citywide budget update, and then we will return with a budget amendment scheduled for June 20. And we would notify all of our grant applicants of the decisions made no later than June 30. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Any other questions or guidance for staff?
I would just say, theater folks, go forth and prosper. That's very exciting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just add additional comment to the last slide that Stacy just shared. Our goal is to come back on the June 6 council meeting and have a very high-level recap of the prior discussions on Measure R, Measure H, and as well as ARPA funds, with the intention of not going into it, going back on any of the decisions, just to recap and provide to you the high-level summary of it, and with the adoption of the final budget amendment and including all these items on consent calendar at the second meeting in June.
Is that when you can sort what gets paid for by what?
Exactly, yeah. So we can summarize it all at the June 6 meeting.
Okay. All right, so let's get back into the order that we were in. So we took 12.4 out of order, and there we go. So we'll move back to item 12.1 of the regular calendar. Actually, I'm sorry. Do we need to take a formal vote of the remainder of those recommendations and changes? Are we good? Mr. City Attorney?
I think we're good for now.
Okay, all right. So that will move back to item 12.1, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova. Michelle?
Yes, good evening. Mayor Terry, council members, Michelle Mengay, Finance Manager. The item before you this evening is a resolution to authorize the issuance of a second series of special tax bonds on behalf of the Montalena CFD or Community Facilities District 2014-1. This CFD was formed in 2014 for the purposes of funding facilities and certain impact fees for the Montalena project. The financing-related resolution before you this evening approves the sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $12 million, which will be used to either finance infrastructure for the project or to fund infrastructure-related impact fees. The special taxes, or the special tax bonds issued by the Community Facilities District is secured solely by special taxes collected and levied within the Montalena CFD and is not a debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions the city council may have.
Let's start with any public comment on this item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for this item.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions for staff?
Move approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. Motion is agreed to. We'll move on to item 12.2, and I'll be handing the meeting over to Vice Mayor Budge, as I, Councilmember Gatewood, and Pulapati will all need to recuse ourselves from 12.2.
Actually, if you could, before you leave, we have, if I may, this item will result in a reduction of tax for properties within the Sunridge CFD, and if three council members, the three council members you just identified own property in that CFD and therefore would have a conflict of interest on it, but if all three of you are accused, we will not have a quorum on the item. And the item is something that there is no alternative means of accomplishing without having a quorum by the council. And it is quite rare for us, but common in other places, for cities to have to go through the process that you go through under Regulation 18705, that if there's no alternative manner of creating a quorum, that you can do so by random selection. So we would propose, before the three of you step down, to do that here tonight. And we have, the city clerk is prepared to write your three names on identical pieces of paper.
This is for one of us to stay in the room, you're saying?
This is for one of you to stay and participate, because we do not have a quorum without one of the three of you participating.
We've never gotten to do this before.
Why can't you just have somebody?
First time ever.
Because, because the, because that's not what the regulations say.
Yeah.
So we're following, we're following the PBC regulation here.
Never seen anybody do it.
And sometimes it's referred to as drawing straws, but it simply is just a random selection that's allowed for by the regulation. So with that, Madam City Clerk, if you could just write all three names, or do you have all three names ready and written?
I have all three names ready and written. So the first one here is Siri Pulapati. They're on yellow index cards. They're all the same size, Garrett Gatewood, and third, Donald Terry.
So now you'll put those in a bag or cup?
They're in a bag. It's a Rancho Cordova bag.
A Rancho Cordova bag, I see.
I have three cards for those who are present in the room. I'm placing all three in a really large bag. I'm shaking it.
And you're?
I'm putting my hand in, and I'm pulling out Garrett Gatewood.
Congratulations, you won nothing.
So we leave. So the two of you recuse, and then what that means is that Councilmember Gatewood will participate for this and all related items, regardless of how much time it takes or how many meetings.
Okay, so we will excuse our colleagues and ask staff, who seems to be Michelle again, for a, just a description of what the effect of this actually is on the people who live in the area.
Absolutely. So the item before you this evening is the consideration of approval for the funding of refund bonds for CFD 2003-1, which is the Sunridge Anatolia Development Area. This district, like many of our other community facilities districts, was formed in 2003 for the purpose of financing the acquisition and construction of public facilities and infrastructure improvements that were needed for that development area. In 2012 and 2014, the city council authorized the issuance of special tax revenue bonds in the amount of $35.6 million. With the construction of the majority of the project being complete, combined with the upcoming call date of the 2014 bonds, the city was presented with an opportunity to refund or refinance these bonds through the issuance of the 2022 refunding bonds at interest rates lower than those existing on the current bonds. Although the call date for the 2014 bonds did not allow us to capture the historically low interest rates of 2021, the finance team did go through an S&amp;P rating where we received an A rating on these refunding bonds, which is expected to produce slightly lower interest rates than had we not completed this rating process. So the reduction in the borrowing costs associated with the new refunding bonds will allow the district to reduce the total debt service payments by approximately $3 million over the life of the bonds. And that savings will be passed on to our current and/or future homeowners in the form of lower special tax levies starting in fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Similarly to the CFD bonds issued or authorized in the last action, these are special tax bonds, and they are secured solely by the special taxes levied within that district and are not a debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Okay, so then I would ask if there's any public comment anywhere?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any questions for staff?
Just to summarize, what this means is lower taxes for everyone in the Anatolia area, correct?
All property owners, yes.
All property owners in that area are now lower taxes. So this is government lowering taxes, is what you're saying?
It is.
Just wanted to make sure, okay.
It is.
Just wanted to end on a high note.
No, it is, that's.
Good job, Stacy.
The word refund, the word refund is kind of confusing, but this actually happened in Laguna West, like 20 or some odd years ago, when they were originally built with the Melrose, they had the same issue. You know, they paid for it with their taxes, and then sure enough, they were, at some point, they were able to lower the tax rate, which meant a really nice lowering of the tax bill. So it's.
Counsel, if I may also add to, this is also partially due to receiving the A rating that we have received, and this is a great acknowledgement of the city's financial health and financial situation. So this is kudos to our team and kudos to the council for having, moving us in the direction that we're receiving an A rating in the bond market.
Let's be sure we communicate this to residents in very clear terms, not the usual investment bank gobbledygook that no one would find understandable, but rather the way to say, this is due to good fiscal practices at the city and our hard work to try to lower, you know, our costs of this obligation on you, the homeowner, something like that. Make it very clear to them what's happened.
Well, we have communications in the back of the room, and I had asked him this afternoon to please define what in the world we were talking about. So I know communications can figure out a way to communicate that to the people who live in that area.
My dad was an accountant and a finance guy, and I know you do not let them write your press releases.
No, thank you. We appreciate you all for your financial.
Because they'll start saying basis points, and people have no idea what they're talking about.
So we need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Of course you can.
Just making sure I don't know the rules.
Well, you're sitting.
I got pulled out of a hat. Second.
So, city clerk.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati is recused. Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry has also recused himself.
Motion carries, thank you very much. So if Donald will, Siri will return to their online rooms.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Good work.
I know, I need to go.
All we need is okay from the council on this item.
Branding? Branding discussion? Cool, everyone get comfortable.
Oh, no.
This is like asking the council to choose a color.
Yeah.
Almost not bad.
Gunmetal gray and nothing but palm trees.
Okay, Donald raised his hand.
Oh, we're not allowing him to speak, that's interesting.
Thank you, Linda, for watching.
Linda's the only one who noticed.
We got you here. Glad to come back, all right.
Now, where's Siri?
Is Siri coming back, you reckon?
Yep, so 12.2 has been, I don't know, I wasn't even watching.
All we've got is branding.
We'll move on to 12.3, and I've got Ashley Goughton and Megan here in the chambers, and we have Councilmember Pulapati back. Go.
Good evening, council. This is Megan Siren with a senior management analyst, and we're here to talk about the youth center branding discussion. We were last here on, I'm not, my clicker is not working. Oh, there we go, okay. We were last here on March 29 to show you two items, and since then, we have discussed with RC Arts and the youth again. So Ashley, we'll discuss those, but we just want to give you a very brief background. Obviously, this is for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, which is located on Investment Circle. It is centrally located and will serve our elementary and teenage students with a focus on equity, inclusion, mentorship, academic support, and sports activities. The youth center's primary mission is to create greater outcomes in the lives of the youth that we serve, and the youth center's goals focus on a focus on a safe, positive environment, fun sense of belonging, supportive relationships, opportunities, and expectations, and recognition. And we are currently underway on our renovations, and we do expect the doors to open in fall of twenty-two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Downton, Senior Communications Officer. As Megan mentioned, we last came to you to discuss a logo for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center that will create an identity for the center. We have two logo concepts to bring back to you that have evolved since we last met with you that incorporate feedback from the council at the last meeting, the Arts Council, our partners, as well as Rancho Cordova Youth. The concepts were created with these additional objectives in mind. First, that the logos are ultimately for our youth. We want our youth to have ownership over them. Number two, we wanted to incorporate Rancho Cordova Youth Center into the logo design. Number three, we wanted a tagline that should speak to the overall mission and goals for the youth center. Fourth, we wanted the logo to be versatile, so it could be used in a variety of ways. Fifth, we wanted the logo to be able to be used in conjunction with our partner logos. And lastly, number six, we want the logo to be timeless. So the key logo elements that you are going to see, which have evolved since we last met, is that we have incorporated the RCYC. Originally, we presented the YC and have met with the council's request to make it more Rancho Cordova-based. And second, we have the tagline we presented last time, which is Your Place to Shine. First, to indicate that this is a location for our youth, where we want them to feel like it's their place. And the shine, which speaks to the objectives and mission of the youth center. So moving on, this is the first concept we have to present to you. One of the recommendations from the Arts Council was to try to find alternate ways to use the star. Originally, in the concepts, it was a small element to the logo, and we've used it as a way to help magnify the RCYC. And then the text and tagline are also featured prominently in a stacked feature. On the left, you'll see it on a white background, and on the right is on a darker background. Here, you can see all of the different uses for a logo. Everything from on the left-hand side, a letterhead, to on a social media channel, and on the right with collateral. You can also see that it is used in conjunction with the partner logos, which are the city, Boys and Girls Club, and Rancho Cordova Police Activities League. This is the second concept. The slight variations include a border outline to the star. Again, that is transposed with the RCYC. We have the text and tagline once again stacked, but the font is slightly modified in this version. And here you can see it in the uses, just like for Concept One. Here are the concepts side by side, and we'd like to open it up to get feedback from the council and answer any questions you might have.
Go back to the hat. It's an attractive hat.
It is.
So which one's the, okay, one, go back to the hat?
So we still have people in the audience, if somebody wants to speak to the item.
Hey, artist, Jen, what do you think?
Well, hang on, are, are we done with the staff presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I'll, I'll talk about it.
Okay.
Jennifer's here, and we have a hand raised in Zoom.
Um, yeah, I think that, being in the promotional products industry, that I think number two is a little bit more interesting. So I think it just is, you know, and I, I think the logo is presented in a way that it can have a long version and a stacked version, which is going to lend itself to a lot of different uses. So, I mean, I think from the evolution from the first sets of branding to where we got now, I think we've got something that's interesting for the kids, something that's easily convertible to a one or two color imprint. So, I mean, I think from just being able to use, the colors are very common colors. So you're not going to have, we have, I have a lot of clients who will get these really funky colors and then they go out of style. So I think that by going with these classics type colors, you're kind of getting that timeless look that you're kind of looking for. So I have kids, and I think they would be excited about that brand. So. That's me.
I like it.
And then we have somebody in Zoom?
We do. We have Tara Kolvenbach, and we'll, Tara, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and we're going to bring those images back up on the screen.
Okay, can you hear me?
We hear you, Tara. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
I like it. It's action oriented. I think the kids would love it. So that's my comment.
Which one?
Oh, the one with the star. You mean there are two different ones?
It, it takes, it's very subtle.
It's just the star, this, this, the star is. Drawn, look, there's a little white stuff in the star and, instead of the outline.
I like, no, I liked number one.
Thanks.
For one.
Uh, yeah. Go ahead, Council. Start, what's your favorite, Gar?
Two.
What's your, will you get three?
Um, I like number two also because I like the way the star is outlined, but is the, is the yellow in the star on number two as intense as it is on number one? Or can it be bumped up a little bit? Because it just reads as though it's a little bit paler, not so much intensity in the color.
It, it's because of the white outline, but the yellow are both the same.
Okay. But. So if we could just bump that up a little bit, you know?
Got it.
Yeah.
Number two. Sounds like it's number two. Okay, so I, I heard a majority for two. Does any, Siren, Adam, do we need a motion for this, or is staff guidance enough?
I believe so. I think it would be helpful if the council just officially endorses number two.
Okay, move approval.
You have a second?
Second. I really like the use of Cordova red in the logo.
Of what?
Where do you see the red?
That's a joke. There is no red in the logo.
We were so close. We're so close.
I was going to bring it up.
All right. Well, you know what? I want to change to red. I want a red star. I want Cordova red star.
Yeah, I think you need to have some links to Rancho Cordova.
We're going to have red shirts. Red hats.
So, so what you're saying is, at this point, you're not ready to vote on this, and you'd like staff to bring it back again?
Yep. Yes. Can you put in Rancho red, please?
Actually, let's ask Ashley. Did you guys consider red in any of this?
We were following the palette for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center and looking at the different colors. Is red in that palette?
Oh, the building palette?
I don't believe it. Yes.
I don't think we put red in there.
I don't think so.
We put fuchsia and stuff like that.
The colors are very similar to what we have for the city overall.
What'd you really think, Linda?
As far as the color is concerned.
Keep in mind that it's blue, it's blue and gold for the city, the city logo that's on our.
Is that gold, though? This is yellow.
That's gold.
Yellow. Blue and yellow.
Yeah. Maybe you can make the border red.
A second, number two.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. I have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander to, to approve number two. Roll call, please.
With a little more intense yellow.
Making more.
Can that be gold?
To have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati. What was that?
Do I have to make a choice between one and two?
Yes.
You need to vote on whether or not you're, you're, you're supporting the motion of two.
You can vote no.
Yeah, no.
Good.
Yes, no?
No, no. I, I, I would like to see some red incorporated.
Thank you. We understand.
Uh, Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
But I need the star kicked up a notch. I need it up a notch.
Motion agrees. Um, okay. Uh, Council, a request for future agenda items.
This meeting is being recorded.
We will move to adjourn in the memory of General Jim Taylor.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I believe our city manager just let me know that we could pass on closed session tonight. Are you comfortable with that, or did you want to still do it?
Yeah, Council, we have, it's, this is not super time sensitive. We have, we still have some time with the, with the closed session item. If you prefer, we can do that at the next meeting. Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay.
Let's see if we can't hold the, the council and see if we can do a closed session before the meeting and try to get some of those out of the way.
We could do that. That would, that would be actually. Yeah, we will, yeah, we will, actually, that would be very good.
Good. So with that, we're adjourned in the memory of Jim Taylor. We got no report out from closed session?
Mayor Terry, can I just make one, one clarification? So I just wanted to clarify that a public comment that is received by the City Clerk's Office, as noted on the agenda before three o'clock, is distributed to the city council and staff. It's also made available to the public on the city's website, and it's made available to the public in the back of the room in the council chambers. For a public comment received via email after three o'clock, it is only distributed to staff and the city council members. So I just wanted to make sure that I made that distinction. It's also on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just say that our city clerk does a wonderful job of helping us run these meetings. With that, we will stand adjourned at nine fifty-eight. Have a good evening, everyone.